Er hoor je goed te horen, ik heb je gezien.
Ik wil kijken welke landen je spreken hier, Zuid-Afrika?
Kan ik zien mensen die veel Zuid-Afrika spreken?
Het is bijna de meeste, en dan Afrikanen?
Is er iemand met Afrikaans praat?
Oké, en dan de andere die het Koesan lande spreekt? Nee, niks, het is die één? Oh, het is Zuid-Afrika. En dan andere landen? Nee, alleen Zuid-Afrika en Afrikanen. Dan zullen we voor iedereen bezorgen. Wat we normaal doen voordat we beginnen met onze gesprekken, we openen de gesprek met de nationale thema. En ik geloof dat we nu allemaal weten dat men zijn kippen moeten nemen. We zijn een trots Zuid-Afrikan. We doen dat met een trots nation. Kunnen we langer? Dank je heel veel, we moeten gaan zitten. Je bent een erg grote publiek. Ik begin door te danken voor je allemaal voor je vandaag kwam.
Ik wil graag bedanken dat je in Italië hier bij ons bij elkaar gekomen bent vandaag.
Oké, dan hebben we een programma, ik geloof dat het met jou is gecommend.
Ik versteunde vandaag hoe het programma met die gedeelte is.
We moeten dan worden verwelkomstigd door de gemeente.
Ons verwacht welke verwelkoming die gemeente heeft.
Dan gaan we met de introduktie om je te weten wie we zijn.
Daraan zal ons sociaal voorstel zorgen dat je weet wie we zijn.
Dan gaan we met de doel van de dag overnemen, ik ben de president van het commitee. En dan zal mijn collega met je delen hoe je de orale en geschreven aanbod zal volgen.
Daraan zal ik ook voor je verdeidelijk waar die doelstelling is voor vandaagse vergadering en mijn collega zal aan ons verdeidelijk hoe die geschreven inmondelingen indieningsgepaardig zal worden.
Dan horen we je, de reden waarom we hier zijn, we zijn hier om je te horen.
Waarom we hier zijn, is om je aan te wijten.
En we zijn blij dat je kwam in numbers, we hebben zelfs een overflui. Dit is hoe we het met de orale aanbod gaan overnemen.
Ons is wel blij dat je hier is weer eens vandaag, ons heeft zelfs oorflui naar die ander salte. Die volgende is de verdeideling van hoe die indienings zal werken.
Ik vraag mensen van mijn link om de eerste te zijn die op deze kant zitten.
Ik zal eerst een geleidendheid geven voor die persoon aan mijn linkerhand om handen op te steek om gekent te worden voor het spreken weer en dan naar de middelste stuile in die salte te bewegen.
En toen ze het gedaan hebben moeten ze gaan zitten voor we kunnen laten dat de anderen komen.
Wanneer er al klaar is, zal ons voorstuk dat alles pleeft uit te bewegen naar die salen uit zodat ze plaats kunnen maken voor nieuwe mensen om die sal binnen te komen.
En dan nadat je je aanbod hebt gedaan, komen mensen terug naar hun kant en de rest gaat daar weer.
Naar die indiening van toe is zal hij terug bewegen naar die andere mensen zal weer naar de middelste rijten.
Ik hoop dat dit voor iedereen veilig is om volledig te partijen.
Ik vertrouw dat het terugvaardig is voor alle om te helen.
Daarom gaan we met de business van de dag over.
De besluit zal ik voorstellen dat ons anka met die salke van de dag.
Dan vraag ik de kanzelaar Georgio Kuru-Metsi om ons te verwelkomen op beeld van de mayor van Zanzabane, de lokale gemeente.
Daraan zal ik ook geleidend gaan aan ahbare Georgio Rometzi van die Zanzabane gemeente om voor ons een woord van welkoming te geven.
Ik groet je allemaal. Ik zou deze kans willen gebruiken om allemaal te verwelkomen vandaag. Ik ben hier staan voor de mayor omdat hij niet hier is.
Ik is vandaag hier in verdiemberging van die burgemeester, wat niet vandaag hier is niet.
De onze kanzelaar, Miss Lindy Weteis, is de stem van de gemeente.
En ook onze kanzelaar, Miss Lindy Weteis, die is de stem van onze lokale gemeente.
En ook namens ahbare Lindy Weteis wat die speaker is van die plaats van de gemeente en ook een raadslet is.
Naast mij ben ik onder de kanzelaar Donyani, zij is mijn collega. Ik moet zeggen dat we genoeg genoeg in Zanzabane zijn om een programma zoals dit te hebben.
Ik wil uitleggen dat we hier echt genoeg genoeg zijn om de regering te hebben komen visiteren zodat ze kunnen komen en onze wraakken en onze commenten kunnen luisteren.
Ik is wel blij dat de regering vandaag hier is om naar ons klachten in kwezes te leister.
En dan wil ik deze kans ook gebruiken om alle die regeringsemploederen te danken die uit verschillende plekken komen en hier komen en hier partijen.
Dank je ze voor al die regeringsamtenoren en werknemers wat gekomen hier naar Zanzabane.
Ik wil u zeggen dat je veilig en beschermd bent hier in de Zanzabane gemeente. We willen een geweldige programma voor de dag hebben.
We willen zeevenwelkomen, dus voel je je vrij en als er iemand is die vraag heeft, voel je je vrij om dat te doen, want dit is precies de doel van deze gesprek.
Ik wil graag voor je zeggen dankjewel dat je hier is, je is veilig in die sal, je is beschermd en ik voel als het bleef vrij en hoop om iénige frank kwezes te liggen.
Dank je, dank je kanzelaar Georgio Kuru-Metsi.
Dank je als je Georg Kruemetsi.
Kanzelaar Georgio Kuru-Metsi.
Voor de warme welkomen. Veilig te zeggen, we zijn niet regering, we zijn lid van parlement.
Dit is wel iets om te noemen dat ons niet, de regering is niet ons is leder van die parlement.
Voor die die begrijpen onze konstituzionale hierarchie in de sfeer van regering.
Dat die verstaan hoe die sfeer van de regering werkt.
Je weet dat er drie armes zijn.
Zal je ook weten dat er drie gedeeltes van die stat is of uitstrakings is?
Maar ik begrijp waar de kanzelaar komt van, want er zijn twee armes, er is de legislatie en de executie.
Maar ik verstaan waar die raadslet van daarmee komt, maar dat is twee delen van de regering, is de gemeente en die wetgever.
De drie armes zijn de legislatie.
Eerstens is daar die wetgever.
Dat is je parlement.
Dan is het parlement.
De legislatie bestaat uit parlement.
Die wetgever bestaat uit die parlement.
De provinciale legislatie.
Dan is er provinciale wetgever.
En de lokale kanzellen. En dan is de andere armes de executie.
Dan is daar ook die andere armes uitstrakend, maar die uitvoerende raad.
En daar vind je de president in deze kabinetten.
En daar is voor meestal de president in zijn kabinet.
Daar vind je de premier en de lid van de executie.
Dat is voor meestal de premier en de leder van die uitvoerende raad.
En daar vind je de district mayor en de local mayors en de eskoos.
En dat is ook voor die districtsburgemeesters, die alias alvekas in alle offdelings is.
En de derde armes is de judiciary.
En daar is die rechtstelsel.
Je weet onze toestanden van de ondertoestanden tot de konstituzionale toestand.
Wie dan ook die we gaan van die plaats, we gaan tot de nationale.
Oké, daarnaast heb ik lid van de portfolio committee on environmental affairs, fisheries en forestry met me.
Dat bij je zegt dat je leder van die comité van bosbouw, verserijen en omgevingssalke bij ons.
Ik vraag hen van mijn link om zich snel te introduceren.
Ik zal mijn linkerhand vragen dat er een sociaal voorstel is.
Dank je, honorele chair.
Dank je ahbare voorstel.
Mijn naam is Tembe Gamthunu, ik ben lid van parlement voor de ANC.
Ik is de bekamotuul, ik is lid van die ANC wat hier verdiembergerd wordt.
Dank je, honorele chair, mijn naam is Ngabisa Kancho.
Dank je ahbare voorstel, mijn naam is Ngabisa Kancho.
Ik ben lid van parlement voor ANC, ik werk ook hier in deze portfolio committee on environmental affairs.
De lokale parlemente, de ANC, ik ga de commitee.
Morgen, allemaal. Dank je, chairman van de portfolio committee, mijn naam is Simpuwemba. Ik ben lid van deze portfolio committee en ook voor ANC.
De lokale commitee in de portfolio, ik ga de ANC.
Goedemorgen, allemaal, mijn naam is Cheryl Phillips. Ik ben lid van de portfolio committee en ik vertegenwoordig de democratische alliance.
De lokale commitee in de portfolio, ik ga de ANC.
Er is iemand die zit naast mij, je zult hem zien als hij komt.
Daar is iemand dat langs mij zit, je zal nu zien dat hij hier komt.
Gelukkig is hij in het programma van vandaag, hij zal zich introduceren en de item presenteren.
Hij is hier, hij is zelf, werk voorstel van je respekt.
Maar hij is honorele persoon van de EFF.
Maar is ook ahbare lid van die EFF.
Oh, dat zijn we, en dan hebben we een team van ondersteuning dat ons ondersteunt, sommigen zijn hier, wij vroegen ze.
Dit is ons, ons is ook hier een span ondersteuningspersoneel wat voor je nu zal wijten.
De andere zit hier, aan de voordeur van mij, kun je de massen vrezen?
De andere persoon hier aan mijn achterhand, wijst wij voor allemaal.
The camera greet the masses.
Meri ko pa kora le bane ba le baba duzin fale batuleze matzoho ba lidi medise.
And then we want to welcome our outsourced interpretation team. You might be aware that parliament is such a normal we bring our own interpreters from parliament but we had to ask to outsource this function led by interteam mekwe on my side, just waved to the masses.
Dan wil ik ook i foerstal in die talkspan, dit is een uitgecontracteerde talkspan wat gelijk word hier Ahbaro mekwe.
En dan kaper kilalese kampasa, bafetoli di baba nse fanofa, baba etelezimpele ki remekwe nakasebele er kilale bane kanti, ri kela kap, bafetoli di baruna kozapalamentein, me ya no baxareki de tata rebiri bidwa kora keta kozena muli katon la bo.
Somewhere they have got senior officials from the department of eh eh fisheries, forestry and environment, can you wave and greet the, the people?
Daar is ook voor ons amtenore van die departement van bosbouw, visereye en omgevingsalka kan i voor ons wai.
Jia nu izin kora muharakarona kape fanofa na leba ofisi ribabango ba tanki di ba ilen kora batamole fa peylenulela eh dikolo ho eh di kha le tsareya di kapi, so banale rona le bo.
And we've got representative of our state-owned enterprises, Escom as well, can you wave wherever you are seated?
Onset ook amtenore van staatsbesetter entiteitsus iskom kan i voor ons wai dat ons in war iset.
Re berena kape leba bango ba ilen koreki, ma loko a, ma fa pa.
I think I have chairs for you, you can come inside here, eh?
Akis sekere ons het stuhl free.
Stay in the overflow Escom.
Ba ngo balona lekanal taka kuano kona le di baka nyanga za di du lo lutahu du la.
Also Salga is represented in this meeting, can Salga wave and greet the members?
Salga word ook i verdienvorige, kan Salga voor ons wai i leer gruet?
Er na le bane zito ta baino kora, ba imeetsi motenka ko pa ne eno ya rona, loka, chuleza matzoho, lubo.
Umo, you see, with us, it's okay.
Ba duleze kafamoro kafaka botcha ba.
Okay, having said that, let me take this opportunity to introduce myself. My name is Faith Mutambi, I'm the chairperson of the code portfolio committee on environment, forestry and fisheries.
Ik wil mij graag sal, mij graag mijself aan i foerstal, ik is Faith Mutambi, ik is i foerster van die comitie van die departement van bosbouw, visereye en omgevingsalka.
Er ke te tengsa bakasene so goi kiseso kora ki namang lina lame ki mututlerey Faith Mutambi ki nam modula stulo wa comitie enue eh ya tikolo ho di kha le tsareya di kapi.
I'm told there are councillors in our midst, can you just wave your hands so that we see you as well?
Ik verstaan ons het raadstieren ons meren kan i voor ons wai dat ons ikan aikoo.
Re bolelo kona le ba councillora bane zemoharakarona chuleza matzoho ka zuwe zuwe, lidi medise lubo.
But I was told they're there, then, okay, then let me welcome you, our esteemed members of the public.
Ik wil ook ons geachte gasten en leer van die publiek verwelkom.
Ma ki le amokela le lona ma loko asu chaba a tla taka.
You, the people of Zanzabani local municipality.
I is die mensen van die plaslike municipaliteit van Zanzabani.
Ilen lona ba thobama sepala waselehaya wa Zanzabani.
And I want to also acknowledge the presence of all fire stakeholders who are gathered here today.
En ik wil ook die bijvoering en die wordigheid van alle belanghebendes met brandblessing en brandbestrijding verwelkom.
Maybe la kaper bata koh amokela le banale sa be barona ba ilen kora badira katsa milelo, ba ba le motenka haro.
I'd love to acknowledge you, the staff from Escom and the officials from the department.
Ak denke i die personeel van Escom en i leer van die departement ook herke.
Ki le amokela is ilen badira kota Escom, moho ya kufika kala ka ba tanki di ba ilen kora ki barona.
And then on behalf of this collective in front here.
Namens die comitie i foer.
Me mo bueme ngjaku comitio ki e duzin fa pelefa.
I want to thank you all from the bottom of our hearts.
Wil ik i niedrig bedank.
Ki bata kolo leboha kozapilo.
For coming on this Friday afternoon.
Dat i op hieri vrijdagmiddag hieri eng gekommet.
Kobo lutle fanoka labo tano tapama.
I had the acting mayor remarking that you are safe.
Ik het geweer die warnemende burgemeester opgemerkt dat i veilig is.
Ju tule eh ra taropo war na a tla losa kora lucirele tachile.
And then, I mean, we appreciate the risk you have taken because we know that your municipality is marred with some uprisings.
Ik waardeer dat i een risico geniemet om hier te wies met ons weer die municipaliteit is geogemaakt opgetaken met zeker dragemind en onris.
Er lebo kala matzapa alwa, zereng kahona ra izo kora masapala walona, o na lidu kujuayoko.
So hence we want to thank you for making it because it takes men and women with courage to do that.
Daarom wil ons i bedankt dat i hier is van dit neem, rachtig mans en frauns met durf om i te te doen en hier te wies.
Re lebo kafala tata kahona kuji ra jalo, kutatwa ka bana leba sa di baba pe lokale, baba sa ipo nein zaba.
And then we want to thank through you acting mayor, the officials from your municipality.
Dan ook deer i Ahbaro warnemende burgemeester wil ons i leer van die municipaliteit bedank.
Meri bata koh lebo haloena, ratoropo wanama osa tsere moho le ba tanki di baka kozako masepala.
For supporting our advanced team that came here to prepare for this hearing.
Voor die ondersteuning van ons span wat voor uitgestieres om voor de bereif van ihre vergadering.
Kobo wilewa amokela so tla pasaro na susenese etelezuka pele kota koba kani zaka kuano, eno ya konpieno.
We also appreciate that because if it was not for the support, this public hearing wouldn't be happening.
Dit is ook voor ons belangrijk, want sonari openbare die ondersteuning en i municipal ondersteuning sa iere vergadering nie plaskonfent.
Re kola boha fala tata kahona hai ne si ka, koba amokela kaha koo, kuano ne eno ya rona ya kota kulu redza, iniski da i kona.
And again I want to thank all of you who are here today.
Verijens wil ik amal wat hier verdienvorige is vandaag bedank.
Me ki bata koh leboha kape lutse ba balulenteen fanofa konpieno.
Because we know you are different stakeholders.
Onses bewust dat i verschillende belanghebendes is.
Kahona ra izo koro na le lu banale sa be baba faro kane.
Some of you are coming from the farming community.
Suma ki, sumaga van i kom uit die landbouwbedrijf, gemeenschap.
Ba ngo balona le tchamo di diroze di tchana leza temo tuo.
Some of you are coming from the various special groupings.
Per tai van i verdienvorige verschijnen speciale grupperingen.
Ne, kona le ba ngo balona baba tchang di dirondingza mi fuda eh kete hile.
You said aside time to come and meet with us.
I het tijd op se geset om vandaag hier met ons te vergader.
Lu ilolo abela na kongwe kuatu ku ilen kora lutokfanoka kota kopa na le ro.
And you said you wanted to be part of the processing of this national and forest fire bill.
En i het geze i wil deel wies van hieri nationale bos en veldbrand weetzondwar.
So lukai le yalo kora lulu na lo bata kozaka rolo eh moho eh berkanen ilo kota kaba la utomo onu eh wa milelo yanahali di kha.
Although we are public, you are public representatives from parliament responsible for lawmaking.
Alweer dat, verdienvorige is van die publiek is wat framwerkelijk is voor weetmalken van die parlementse kant af.
Le muhoro lema loko a tchanko parlamenteng, a ilo korebi kara kona le baruna ki kuji ra melao.
Yes, it's our job to make laws on your behalf.
Dit is daarom ons war om hieri weten te maken namens i.
Diro ya rona eh insa jalo ki kuji ra melao.
But our constitution dictates that.
Maar dit is vereiste van die grondwet dat.
Me fahonze jalo malao teo warro na olayla kore.
When we make these laws.
Wanneer iere i weten gemalk wordt.
Faridira melao eno.
We must confront and seek your views as people on it.
Moet ons i als die mensen se opinies en woche se raad, een achne en raadpleeg op hieri weetzondwarper.
Re tshanezo kora, re kafano kota kohola kanyama lulu na, ilo kora tla kona kujuwa di tshailo talona.
And then in the same spirit with our constitution.
En is alte geersas die grondwet.
Me tu malanong le malao teo warro na.
Further enhanced by the intergovernmental relations framework act.
Wat die interregeringsraambergs weetzondwar ondersteunen word.
Me kape tu malanong le malao wa eh tsarakanalo puso oridiran kawone.
Which amongst others established the framework for national governments, provincial governments and local governments.
Waonere raamberg voor provinciale, nationale en plaslike regering ge- gefestig is.
O hara kati di we otamang melao, eno kora ilao lamoka rolo insonalia puso ya wasechaba, puso ya profensi, di puso ya sellehaya.
To promote and facilitate intergovernmental relations.
Is het daar om interregeringsverhoudingen te bevorder?
O rutwe za kora kona le litrisano moho le kamano fakareha di puso teo si di faro kane.
We have been invited both the provincial government and local municipality, including the districts in case you have service delivery related issues.
Onset ook die plaslike en districts municipaliteiten en raade genoe om ook hier verdienvorige te wies en dien i ene gedienstleveringskuisis heet.
Re la le di za kape leba puso ya wasechaba ya sellehaya kamo koli ya profensi, kuji ra la kora hai ilo kora kona le matata alena lo ona amanagladi ti relo.
But we encourage you not to go off the tangent.
Maar is morige anons asse blif nie, um asse blif nie van die onerwarb afwachte wai knie, afwachte wai knie.
Meri tlo kolo ko pa kora katzwe so lucika loa twa, moho te se kota 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 kaso ne.
So we want you to make full contribution in participating in this bill.
Ons wil graag dat i volle beideros lewe wanneer i deal neem met ber- berartsloging op hieri weetzondwar.
Me konsa konsa jalo re bata kolo tse karo kabo tano eh moho buenka malao utomo onu oma metelezim oridiran fanoka wok.
At the same time, we don't want you to leave this gathering unhappy because you've got issues that has to be attended that we didn't listen to.
Da terselfte tijd wil ons ook nie heet dat i onte friede moet wagen uit die vergadering uit nie om het i kuisis heet wat ook belangrijk is wat ons ook nie na geluisde.
Moho di mohamo kara bata koro lutomo kuano eno lutama yalo sa i tumela kala ba kala koo bohono kona li matata mangwa aile koro kongo haloa bona se bakasa kwa tla hi sa.
That's the reason we've invited these other colleagues to be part of us so that they can respond to all their concerns and those that are not in, if you raise issues that relates to them, we're gonna write to them to give us written responses in writing.
Daarom et ons ander collega's van verschillende entiteitsus die municipaliteiten so genoe om hier verdienvorige te wies om te leister na daar kuisis. En noodas te neem daar open, die gene wat elk nieer is nie wat moet antwoord op i kuisis ons zal ook schrijven naale rig om hier kuisis te beantwoord en aan te spreken.
Ki lo na le ba kala koo bo ritlele ba thobama nse jalo kora bata ba kona kujuwa di tshaila lema tata a me konsa koya ko pele, etan na kanya kora matata mangwa a tsharkisijing a aba amang, a a arabiyweka kokoalwa ilo kora di kara bozo di tati kona koro me la ko kolo na.
So that's why we want to encourage you to participate fully.
Daarom wil ons i anmoedig om die volle deel te neem aan hieris sitting.
Katalo kankaya mo ra luruwet za koro lutse karo kabo tano.
We will also be noting and capturing the inputs of you that will be speaking directly to the be, the substance of the bill.
Ons zal ook i ensa en opmarkings wat gemalk is wat direct verbandt met iere weetzondwar nutilier in hier schrijf.
Me serikla kusidira, re tlo koo twaya moho le kokoala matata mangwa a li tlo kwa tarkisa a ilo kora amanagakamalalo, le malao utomo onu orguang kawone.
Of utmost importance your inputs.
I ensa is van uit der stebelaan.
Me sabo tokabo holo ka di tshailo talona.
Your inputs will form part of our decision-making process on this bill.
En daarom zal hieri ensa wat i lewe deelvoerum van ons achgegrond en inrichting wanneer het kom bij die besluitmalken op hieri weetzondwar.
Ki kora di tshailo zo talona, ditle kona karo lo ya di tshetso teritlen kuji di ra ze ilen kora di ta boba melao, o u di ruwenka malao utomo onu.
At the end, this bill will be processed by parliament.
Uit eindlik zal hieri weetzondwar die parlement verwarb word.
Me kuabo felo eh malao utomo onu o, kato ya bo felo eutlen kozewa kawone, etla bo ele parlamente.
Then I want to emphasize on this cooperative governance approach we are using.
Ik wil claim leo pericooperatieve regeringsanslag wat ons genoommet.
Ki bata koh katele la eh malebanale litrisano moho ene irguangayoné eh mobuso.
Because we are saying this because we believe that the achievement of development goals in South Africa is dependent on a heavily effective system intergovernmental relations.
Ons glua dat dit belangrijk is om doette in die regeringsraamberg te bereik die er goede interregerings samenwerking te.
Ri bua jalo kala ba kala kora ri, ze kora ko bo felo eh huatla kha malao utomo onu otota kutlohi kaya kaka litrisano moho e wa ya, litrisano moho ya bubusi eh er nanglyone, eridiran kayone.
This means that we essentially serve you, our people better when we cooperate as government institutions.
Dit betekent dat ons als regeringsinstelling goed moet samenwerk zodat ons i als die bevolking beter kan dien.
Seno sarah kora erokona holo tusaka di dirolo botoka tata, faridrisana moho, ja kadi teo, ze di faro kane za puso.
After all, no government exists by itself.
Op i uitende bestaan geen regering, neet opse eiene.
Kahora kanti kone, kakuji reha kora puso ene i ki emete kano si.
It exists because of you people who voted it into office.
Dit bestaan is goed van i die mensen wat dat verdant regering gestemme.
So huiema hayonel kona ten hayonel kwa bo kujuwa kora ki luna, ma ilo kora luwohitezo kora innete.
In essence, I mean you metamuse.
Dit dan een opgesom betekende dat i die meeste, of die meeste tal i is die belangrijkste.
Seki lekan kosa bolela fanofa kora tota, luna ki luna ba bo lulembu tshokwa kofita eh singwele singwe fano.
The law we are seeking your views on this time around is already stated is called the National Feld and Forest Amendment Fire Bill.
Die weetzondwar war op ons vandaag i ensa nodigheid en is reeds genoom is die weetzondwar van eh bos, nationale veld en bosbrande.
Eh, malao utomo utlen koba ta di tshaila talona ja kaha rastarata luci ze ubidua kora i malao wa wasechaba, malao utomo wasechaba oma metelezim wa milelo yanahali di kha.
Its original main purpose is to both regulate and manage the field fires.
Wat ze hoeft doen natuurlijk is om veld en bosbrande te reguleren.
Me wika lo ba wona ki holaola eh milelo eh ruyang molnache.
Okay, and then it also then imposes obligation on landowners to prepare and maintain fire bricks?
Dan biedt ook wetgeving of stelt het weten een plak voor ei noers van land om veld te brandstrekken en so voort een plak te stalen.
Me kape se u si di ranka kora, u si karesa ba thoba ilen kora ki bengba di tsa, wika rabelo ba kora ba kona kuji ra mileloane, eh di ra kora molo lo oske wa kola.
It also places the duty on landowners to make provision for the management of fire fires on their own land.
Dit mag ook verschining vergrond ei noers om verschining te maken voor brandbestrijding en brandbestuur op hale paschielen ei no.
Me kato oruesa bengba di tsa, ma ika rabelo, akora bana li di tulaka ni, taka laola milelo eh mo di tenzabona.
It is in this regard that the key amendments being proposed in the bill primarily comprise enhancing of the definitions.
Daarom is die hoeft doen een de van hieri weetzondwar weisigen om die definitions van die bestaande wet te verstarken en te verbriet.
Je kona kamo malao utomo onu oritlen kora la taka kora, o taka kape kadi taylo ze ilo kora moho zone kutle kora talusiwa kaza la koma metelela di taloso, teritli kala moho.
The amendment is also about facilitating of the formation of fire protection associations by municipalities and traditional councils?
Dit is ook, dit is ook verband met die verstarking en skippen van veld en bos- bosbrandbestrijdings in die tijde die er privaat aheinskappen in ook plaslike regering.
Malao utomo onu o kape ubua kape kaka kora bano baru suwe wika rabelo za kora ba kamen me katra yakuhi tirleza momili long, me etan be iduwa jalo ki bom masapala, moho li di puso zamasepala.
It also compares municipalities and other state organs like Escom that own and manage state land to join fire protection associations.
Dit noodzak ook staatsorganisus iskom om ook deel te worden van hieri brandbeskermingsvereenigings.
Me kape i rokwe za moho li di teo ze di guze di tchana lebo Escom kora lebo ne, badira kora bana lema loko Me hak pe irukweza, moho liditewze, guze di chana, lebo, OSCOM, hori lebo, ne, badira hori banema loko, ah me kato enu e tewang, yahui tirleza, mo milelo.
And then we also want to amend that long title to call this act now the National Field Fire Act.
Tamalos wijk darin langtitel nie die nationale veldbrandwet veraner.
Me hak pe wikalolo batting fano fati, hofetola, eh se choho, se ilahore ke sa, molau, motewo, orabata hori jaluni, ibidwa hori, ki molau wabo setchaba, wa milelo ya, naha.
We are doing this because you all know that we have got limited forests.
Ons dundet omdat ons baye beparkte bosse in voud hiet.
Ri dira jaloka honarana ra, ize hori, eh harana bunzinti joboka loja diwa.
Eh, we don't have. And we don't have magnitude of field fires like we see in other countries such as Australia, USA and Canada?
Ons het na nie, soe, ake, veldbrandeshuus en landeshuus, Australia en Kanada nie?
Ke jalodjaga harize, rona, haranabata jobo holoja, hurunya, hamilelo, molnache. Hoxanale jaga, hahudire, hakurina, gentsedi, chana le, Australia, le USA.
But yes, we do have frequent incidence of devastating field fires.
Maros, maros hiet wel incidente van vernietigende veldbrande, wat ons erfaw.
Mesesi dira, mona kanyaro, na, je hori, ha, wele, ha pe, renaluhuruña, hamilelo, ebakan, tsenyo, esengana kasepe.
And these frequencies of which are expected to increase due to climate change.
Ons verwach wijk dat die frequentie of die gereeltheid van hiere veldbrande meer gereeld zal plasvind as gevolg van die influut wat klimaatverandering op hiere omgeving hiet.
Meritchwanze rela, choko hori, hurunya, hamilelo, eno ha wele, ha pe, hutloho ke zeega, kan chaya peto ho ya tlaymeet.
And this is expected due to dry vegetation that we see around our arid and semi-arid parts of our countries?
En dit is verwach as gevolg van baye door plantlieve rondom hiere amper woestijn, semi-woestijn gebiede wat ons hiet in die land.
Meseno hak pe sitle huidire, ha kan chaya komelelo ya dimidi, erbonan ele ten hono, le, hono, eh idira hang, moditense, ilahore, dinale komelelo, eh kolo, poza, ze disnan komelelo, eh kalo.
And these instances also happen here in this province, the Northern Cape?
Gefalle van veldbrande vind wijk plas in hiere provincie di Noordkop.
Me butata jobonzinjaloh, rezo choko hori budire gila, ha pe, lemo profensing elo yaronaa, ya, no, northern Cape.
It's one of the fire-prone parts of the country, this province.
Hiere provincie is een van die gebiede in die land wat meer koesbaar is en geneig is tot veldbrande.
Profensie eno yaronaki, engwaya di profensie, ze ilahore, di chabeloa, fela tata, je hurunya, hamilelo.
You'll also agree with me that our country has had frequent episode of drought?
Is wijk my somsting dat ons gereelde druugtes in die land erfaw?
Me hak pe letadumalanale, nahake talosa hormona kanyaro na, renile lidikomelelo, ma kheto ale manziana.
And we need to regulate the management of fire fires better by this act of parliament.
En darier moet ons wijk die bestrijding van veldbrande verbeter en verschkarpe deer hiere wetzundwerp.
Kan chaya mo, resoluzo huleka, kata, hori relaole, hurunya, hamilelo, eno eka, kato, eno eza, wanja parlamente.
You know that fire fires cause serious social, economic and environmental damage.
Ons is bewust dat veldbrande arenstige socio-economise in omgevingsprobleme ferwe schalk.
Ra, ize horu hutuka, hamilelo, ho baka tsenyo, esengana kasepe, mo tikulu hon, molo ah hon, moho limo, za ekonomi.
It is for this reason why we are holding these public hearings with you today.
En dit is om dariree hiet dat ons hiere wipenbora ferwee met evil heef vanda.
Kajaloleno kilonale bakalaho borritsuarak, kokuanui eno yahotla horo reza, molautro moono lilo na humpie.
We want to derive your esteemed inputs to formulate and promulgate a law that speaks to our local and national circumstances.
Ons wijk ie erfawre insal en voorder om beter te kan besluit neememalk wanneer ons die formuliering van hiere wetsamstal om ons landse umstande hiere beste te kan anspreek.
Kajaloh, serabata kuse dira, fano farabata, houtjali chua lema taluna, ze ilahore katsoone, ritloho choma, eh lohufiti samolau, oh ilahore, oh amanali, tsenyo en nanting, mo garoeng e chana le ya, eh wasetchaba, moholi, di karota, sellehaya.
Therefore feel free to express your views on the bill.
Darum wil ons ie noe vergens om frage in optevo om ie opinies op hiere wetzundwerp.
Kajaloh, raloko pa katzoe, zoe, hori, ikutje luputuluri le, hoxa hakiisa, ma ikutje alona, gamolautro moono.
And please be assured that your views matters to us.
En wies wijk asse blif verzekerd dat ie opinies ver ons salkmak.
Ibe lerabata horu luiz, hori, ma ikutje di chua lema taluna, di butoka fela tata, mohorona.
Your views really matters to us as parliament and that's the reason why we are meeting with you, here, our people.
Ie opinies mak ver ons as parlement werkebaasalken, dit is waarom ons vandag hier is, om regadering met ie die mensen tee.
So ma ikutje alona, abu thoka fela tata, mohorona, jaga parlamente, kilonale bakalaho borri le fano, hori, retzarak, kokuanui eno, le luna.
So, we are here to hear from you. We are here to hear from you.
Ons is hier om ie opinies te wer.
Kajaloh, refano, holtla horrezza luna.
I was pushing time, I thought the colleague would be coming. Honorable Tuno, can you be able to deal with the next item because I see it's not in here?
Ake prebeer drakvetpait, maraksin, letes nog nie hiere achbora, letso ikant wernie?
Geneki takeri mudiri kanata basata, horu kilo, holtla jalunjana, kitlohokopa, omongaba diribaro na, hori, atzarre, ntae la, telamoli na newonglaro.
Where is the mic that the councillor used?
Vorisie mikrofon?
Thank you, Honorable Chairperson.
Dankie, achbora, fursiter.
Erha, hori leboha, mudulasstilo, yohtlotlehang.
Greetings to the honourable members, the honourable councillors and the members of the public.
Ek hure die achbora lere, achbora lere van die municipalities en wijk die lere van die publik.
Re, bata kutimiri samaloko arona, a committee, le, ba councillora barona, moholi luna, maloko asetchaba.
And also greetings to the staff members that, for the support staff that are with us here.
En ek ruit wijk asse blif al die passionieren en onderschedingspassionier wat vandag hier schaal met ons is.
Me hak pe, duverisale, maloko arona, abadriba kemono ging, baba nanglerona fano.
Today we are here as the portfolio committee.
Ons is vandag hier, asie portefili kometier.
Humpienerit le fano, jaga, eh, comedia portfolio.
To listen to the submissions by the public.
Ons is hier om te laister na die publikse insal.
Holtla horrezza, di chua le, ze di intiwa, gemaloko asetchaba.
Reason being that we are the parliament of the people.
En dit is omdat ons parlement van die mensen is.
Le bakalatenke, hori, re parlamente ya batu.
So we listen to the communities.
En darum laister ons na die gemeenschap.
Kajaloh, serisi dirang, rerezza ba ahi.
I will just outline the procedures that we are going to follow.
Ek zal graag neet euitlegging wolgeef of euitlegging wolgeef van die procedures wat ons gaan volg.
Kitlehola, taloseza, mohotsa, ma iso oritlenhudi ra di lokawone.
The chairperson will give you an opportunity and you will raise your hands.
Die fursiter zal geleendheid geeve, spreekbeertie, isal dan ie hand opstiek.
Umudulasstilo, utloholo naya chono, melo nalotla, choleza lezo.
Ten members will be given an opportunity.
Tinlere zal uitgeken word en geleendheid gegeen word.
Maloko alona, ababa lingten, kapalo, bata newa chono.
And they will occupy the seats that are in the middle.
Dan zal ie, as ie is spreekbeert, toegeken word zal ie in na die middelste rij beweg en est sitlak door en neem.
Me lutla bolu, tla jalon, lutla hudula, moditilontele, ze di fakhari, ze di khoname.
When a member of the public starts to speak, he or she will introduce himself or herself.
Wanneer e laut van die publik geleendheid gegeen word om te spreek en hij spreekbeerkraai en bij die mikrofon staan zal hij begin deer homofa shelf voor te stalen.
Etla reha ubua, jaga, lelo kolasa chaba, ritloho kopak hori, eh, wii kitisi pele, horu kwenamang.
And will indicate if you support or you don't support the amendments.
Dar na, met dar angedei word of ie die wetzundwerp onderschien of dien staan?
Me, rekopa horo, o taluso, honafau, hori, a, amochela, udumalanale, molautro moono, poza, aha udumalanilo one.
Then you will be, you will, then do your oral submission for five minutes.
Dar na, ie five miniter geleendheid om ie mondelinge indining te lever.
Merahoho hamo, oba onsadi chua le, zaha, ho udi bua gamolomo, me zuzu, ele me kano.
Written submissions will also be taken.
Geskreeve indining so wijk anfar word.
So di chua le, ze di kuadi lueng, le zona dia, amochela seega.
So you can do your oral submission and then present the written submissions.
So ie kan die mondelinge indining lever en dan wijk die geskreeve indining wijk indin.
Okanna wanzadi chua le, zaha, ho kahudi bua gamolomo, merahoho hamo, okanna, ha pe, warena, ze di kuadi lueng.
Your written submissions will be submitted to our support staff, eh, yes, Chilega here raising the form that needs to be filled and.
Chilega het hier ver ons die forums wat ze woi wat ingeformed word war ie dan nou die geskreeve weerhaa we, kan indin?
Kajaloh, di chua le, taluna, ze di kuadi lueng, ditla bidindewa, Chilega, othwerer foromo fano fah, eh ilahore, othwana, zeho, holtla za yone, ka di chua lezo, zaha, ho ze di kuadi lueng.
You can get the form if you don't have it from here, but there are other pamphlets, white pamphlets with the forms at the back.
Ik kan wijk die forum bij haar kraai, as ie nie eneetnie, dar is wijk wit pamphlete waar die forum reeds bij anghaag is.
Okanna wa newa foromo enu, eh hutza, moho ene, ha, ilahore, kawona yone, me, khonohonali di pamphlete, ze di, ndinali foromo enu, ga famorahoho katsoone.
As said by the chairperson, we also allow the public to talk about things that they feel like they are important, even if they are not part of the, of the bill.
Die fursiter reeds genoom dat ons wijk ie geleendheid zagje om kuesis te oper wat elk nie verband is, of verband, verband is aan die wetzundwerp.
Le bakalaho bo mudulasstilo, hakpe, aluleza, horolokanala, bua kama, tata amang, aluna, loakanyan, rotota, alutzeenya, melifahone, isi karolo ya, molautro mowarona.
But we, we request that we also focus on the bill so that we get your views.
Mar, dit is waar ons verschuk, dat ie asse blif furkes op die wetzundwerp, waar ie doe is waarom ons vandag hier is.
Eh, hundzo hundzo jaloritloho loko pa, hori, le, kome mohopolo tata, luben tata gamolautro moono warona, ilisetota, ritliem fanoka so.
We are all important and your view is important, so we encourage each and every one of you to participate. Thank you, Chairperson.
Ie is amo belangrik, ie opinies belangrik en darum wolde ons ie amo aan umdeel te neem hier aan hiere proces, dankie.
Lotlebata, baba butoka, eh, di chua le, taluna, le zona, di le butoka, raloko pa katzoe, zoe, hori, eh, putulohang, melo zei karolo, ja, ja leboha, eh, mudulasstilo.
Okay.
Hodaan.
I hope we are all now finding each other.
Ek wijk posverstoond om ekar neu, baye hut.
We are finding each other, ger.
Eh, ie dumel, la hori, re talohanyane, senka, bakhaitso.
Lie quiet, why are you so quiet?
Eh, kinki didi metsu sahoo.
Amo lesstalu, komisie lesstalu, pele ie hemut se yon.
Ke, kebata, kebata, hujalere, eh, no, rohltalohant.
Okay. Can I from this side?
Van hiere kantaf, kan, is daar iemand wat is spreekbeert wale?
Get the first ten hands.
Eh, rekopa, tena yan, kha, zaha, zaha, kafale, kagurule, le, bakhaitso, choleza, ma zoho.
Ons is geleend dat ie eerste tinande.
To move from the first row until you fill up the chairs.
Ons beweg van die eerste rij of to die stuile folge malk is.
Aridiranjalo, hoza, moro yang, chare, le, le, zohone, hufi talo, tla za, di tuloteele.
I want you to fill all the chairs from this side.
Ons wohrahe iemand van hiere linkerkantaf die stuile folge malk.
rekopa, hori, redireng, hori, re, tla za, di tuloteele, katzoe, zoe, hoza, kafahari.
Is everyone settled this side? Is there any other person who want to raise a question?
Is daar ene iemand?
How many do you want? Three?
Ah, sata, nokhonohonali.
Ons het viertlak wert, ene iemand wat hier aan hiere linkerkantaf is spreekbeert wale?
Re, zaha, baba raro, hoza, kafale, kagurule.
Can we get the people from the overflow if they are there to come for?
Ene iemand van die oerflui area wat wijk ebeert wale?
Ok, hozarakanale bang, hoza, koho, baba dutzingkwankebale, re, tla, tye, abating.
Overflow, are the people who want to raise questions, I'm giving you the first privilege because you are outside.
Ek geve ie geleendheid van die setpaita, ene iemand?
How many are we getting from the overflow?
Hoeveel ons van die oerflui? Twee.
They must come and sit there, so.
Ale medesle bevere in die middel, kom sit.
Where are they? Have you dealt with the admin to decide, the first person? There's a form that they must write their names on. Did you write your name? Okay, they've already written their names, so I can allow the first speaker to come. Like I've indicated, you are free to speak in the language of your choice.
Eh, rekopa, hori, lukshoko melang, hori, le tenzel, linalalona, moforomon, bakhaitso, mesabobedi, elankshoko, ha pe, hori, oka buaka, buo, epa fela, o, batalho buaka yone.
Ons gaan nou geleendheid geeve for die eerste persoon om is spreekbeert in te neem, ek wijk neet weeruitleg, ie is welcome om die tal van ie keese te gebruik.
I, I hear there's a lot of noise, can you help us? There is a people outside because they are going to, want to hear the speaker. There's a lot of movement, I don't know what's going on.
Eh, bakhaitso, eh, tiyalala, honali, eh, mudumomo holo, eh, akere talohanyane, eridrisanamohoho, sekai, honejana.
We don't want our speakers to be drowned, eh?
Ons wohrahe dat daar stulte is, dat u sie, sprekers kan wert.
Over to you, sir. You are welcome.
Eh, kinamuwa le, David Toniani.
My name is David Toniani.
My name is David Toniani.
I am a resident here in Postbank.
Ek is een birke van Postbank.
Eh, ki tumalela, honali, eh, parlamente, iklimhoronaana.
Eh, we are grateful for the parliament to come to our community.
Ons is dankbaar voor die parlement wat ie bij ons gemeenschappen geslaaid hiet.
Obane, kenale, tlakte, einti, ha intizi, ke reporter, momanispalateiti, mar, habasewore, ba, ba yaarabe, kamopatiere.
Because I have a grievance and I have been telling the municipality about this grievance, but they do not assist me with the grievance.
Want aket de grief in aket ni, na die municipality toegegan, met ie die grief in la haup, ni domie nie?
Eh, konserne, akaki hori, kaski fandin, kaski fandin, honali, liburu, le, lotletin, zela, akiti horo, ona, lotelan, tele, kawore, tele, kehang.
My, my complaint is that in a particular section of our community, there is a white man who has closed the road there, which is supposed to be a passage.
My wift klachte is dat asse witmanen kasklei fontein wat e pat toegemak hiet wat e deer gang moet wies.
Eh, neanos, selenting, re, kabakaya, mo kampen, ya liburu lelewe, na kwen, o, lotela, heke, shankanos, deer ghani, reparition, jora, hutu, leza, kuteli, ya, eh, griko saat.
Eh, because where it is, most of the time he locks the place and we cannot go through.
and we cannot go through. We had to use another roadway if we want to go there.
People prefer to take the road. We need to find another way.
Thank you for the...
Thank you, and the second one?
Secondly, there is a drainage spillage and we have reported that, but nothing is happening.
Do you want to talk about the issue?
The drainage and all the issues that you have raised. Then let's talk about it.
Thank you very much. We are going to ask the officials of the municipality to take your details. Thank you for raising the matter.
Thank you, sir. We would like to ask the municipality to speak.
Can you talk on the bill?
Would you like to talk about the vote on the bill?
I would like to talk about the vote on the bill. I am very happy for this amendment bill.
Do you want to talk about the vote on the bill?
We also appreciate the fact that the parliament has come to the people so that we can raise our concerns.
We would like the parliament to come to us so that we can discuss.
Yes, we support this bill.
Do you understand the vote on the bill?
Thank you.
Next speaker, please.
I would like to ask you.
My name is Wilfred Monnanyana.
My name is Wilfred Monnanyana.
Thank you very much for the parliament to come to our community.
Thank you, parliament, that came to us.
To give us an opportunity to make submissions.
Do you have time to talk about the vote on the bill?
I am talking as the chairperson of CPA.
I'm the CPA.
We appreciate this bill that we are talking about today.
Do you want to talk about the vote on the bill?
There is only one point of clarity which I want to highlight.
I would like to talk about one point.
Which I think that this committee will consider as they draft this law.
I think the committee will talk about the vote on the bill.
In Skaifontain, we are farmers.
Are you a farmer?
Under the CPA. And when I look at this bill, I don't see anywhere where CPA is considered here.
If I look at the vote on the bill, there is no place where CPA is considered.
Another thing is that there at Skaifontain between thirty and thirty-five kilometers.
There is a five kilometer distance.
From here in Sanzabane, thirty-two, thirty-five kilometers.
That is five kilometers from Sanzabane.
The area is divided into three groups in Skaifontain.
The area is a three-parted area in Skaifontain?
When we have failed fires, we face a challenge.
When we have failed fires, it is our biggest problem.
Because when we ask for interventions, we think that since they are too far, they will find that damage has already been done.
When we hope for intervention, people think that it is too far and it is too late, so it is hard to reach.
There are no other ways that the government can bring closer the fire station and expect in terms of fire management.
Is there any way the government can bring more people in this area?
The other thing is that our roads are not in good conditions.
There is a swat.
It takes them a long time to come to the incident because when we ask them, they will say that our roads are not in good condition.
It is very long for us to come to the incident when we see there is a swat.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you so much for your valuable input. It's noted and well received.
Thank you, sir.
You will speak, sit.
My name is Clement Khakani.
My name is Clement Khakani.
I am from Witjoko. The problems that we are facing here at Witjoko. We have a problem because when it's raining, water comes into the house, into our houses.
If the problem is there is rain, then there is water.
We have made a request to the municipality to intervene.
Do you want to talk about the municipality?
Even when it is raining, we are not assisted with that challenge.
If there is rain, we will not help.
That is very painful, a very painful experience to us here in Witjoko.
Do you think it is difficult?
When you look here at Witjoko, we have nowhere to go for assistance.
If we look at Witjoko, we will go to the city.
The other thing which is our challenge here in Witjoko is crime.
Is the area polluted?
There is no cooperation here.
There is no cooperation?
Now I thank the parliament today that they have come here.
I thank the parliament that came here.
To come and listen to our problems.
To listen to our problems?
Lastly. I want you to assist me.
I would like to talk.
This place is surrounded by the mines.
Do you want to talk about the mine?
But those mines are not assisting the Witjoko community with anything.
Do you want to talk about the mine?
But they are mining in our land.
Do you want to talk about the mine?
When you ask them, they will say that it is us who have the permit. But they have so many requirements, but they just come and work and then they just go without doing anything.
Can we come back now to the bill?
Do you want to talk about the vote on the bill?
I've allowed him to speak, but he needs to... Baba, shouldn't be going. You have not yet spoken on the bill. There is no reason why we are here.
Sir, you are not going. You are not going to talk about the vote on the bill.
Yes, we appreciate this bill because it is open to us as the community.
Do you want to talk about the vote on the bill?
Can I plead with the other speakers that are coming now? I'm giving you five minutes. Can you first start with focusing on the bill? And then you can utilize your remaining time for other things.
Please focus on the vote on the bill. I give you five minutes. Do you want to spend more time on other questions? I understand. Good afternoon. My name is Susan Maroge. I'm here in Witjoko. I'm glad that the parliament came to us today.
But the people who organized this meeting did not bring them here. Not all the people can come here because the place is small. We need to stand better and let someone else go there. After that, we will have a better place. We will all hear what is going to start and what is going to say.
So the people who organized this meeting, they made a mistake to choose such a small venue. The problem is that some of us now have to stand outside to wait to come in. If we had another venue, then everyone could have come in and everyone could have joined this meeting.
My problem is that I feel always that if you come here, you should sit there and watch what we are talking about. You should not hear someone else. Go and see yourself what we are talking about.
My problem with the parliament coming here is that you shouldn't just sit there. Two or three of you should go outside and you should look at the issues that we have. Go with our people and see what we are referring to, not just sit down here.
Today, people are not standing. They are sitting on the ground. As a child, they are not sitting around. So that the people leave. I am a small farmer. But they are watching us. Here, they are sitting. But here is our four...
It is what it is. I am a small farmer. Oh, sorry. I'm a small farmer. And I want you to come out. I want you to come have a look at where we are. Look at our issues that we have. You can see where our houses are nearby. Our problem is we have cattle. But here is a mine, here is a piece of land. Where are we going to find them?
The parliament people can't do it for us because we are 15 people. That's because I'm a colleague. I'm not always 15. That place is empty. Because we have money to buy a place.
I'm going to ask you, the parliament, we are more than 15 people who farm on that specific piece of land. Isn't there any way that you could provide us with a farm to farm on? We have the licenses and necessary authority to sell at the auction. The problem is everyone sitting here, you haven't seen our sheep. Now, no one is going to buy them. We have to sell to each other. We can't go out. No one, you won't buy them if you haven't seen them.
Does she know who is the councilor there?
Do you know who is the councilor?
Do you know who is the councilor? Yes, I do know the councillor and I understand what you're saying. I'm glad to know that I can go to the councillor and we can sort this out and he'll know what to do.
Does she know where is the constancy office in this area where she is based?
Do you know who is the councillor?
It's easy to speak when you're here and you're very easy to speak, but then you leave.
I'm raising all these issues because she is raising that we not coming to where she is. But there are parliamentary constancy offices, there are councillors, there are MPLs. You can name all of them, these people. The legislature is here as well. But there are parliamentary constituency offices, there are councillors, there are MPLs, you can name all of them, these people, the legislature is here as well.
Okay, so eh, me frau, opert dat die ons kan wachen en aus, niemand ni ma, ak vo groh kleemleder op, da is i kisser kantoor, da si wijksraadslid, da si mensen van die wetsgever, al hier die mensen is in die area.
De ne ke bo za ta ba eh kahora, kamko kweni katen, eh honale ma councilor ra mo, eh bu muilo hora, ka honehora, isen di kli bo sahaa, eh, honale officia, constituent parliamentary constituent office, muilo hora, a gaesa di kli klibo, honale le kota taramula, muilo hore, leteng, a ka fi biset sa di, di kli bo sahaa, ke.
I hate to raise issues.
Ke onda ta ba eh.
I'm not denying it, raise issues here, but I'm trying, where she's so overwhelmed, we are going to spend the whole day here, listening to her, that's the issue. She's not gonna come, she's not going to come.
Ons, ons, ons geen, me frau nie kon so bits de scene, ons verstand wat me frau wordhouda, es met wat die an gaan, in, as de muzisom eten prood, hie helle dag geen word gesaals. Desu kom ons voor me frau, wil ander geheer dat daar ander plake is en mensen wat die in die area is om me frau te help.
And I know your problem is agriculture related, most mainly.
Ek verstand me frau se problem is landbouw, is meestal gefocus, ne?
And we tried to invite the counter-participated, they didn't come, because we knew, we saw it in our other oversight. Mainly when we are dealing with this bill, most of the issues that are raised are agricultural related.
En ons heet probeer om een collega te noe, wat de nori afdeling war, is nou jammer ek oni geweest, ek nie, maar ons kom achter, dat bouw van die andere vergaderings, dat meeste van die kwesties is landbouw.
And the reason why I asked about the councillor, about the constituency offices, there, there are public, those people who serve in those structures are public representatives, that are supposed to attend to our issues, I'm not dismissing eh.
En desu kom ons frau, of me frau weet wie die wijksraad is, wijksraadslid is en wordi kisser kantoor is. Ons is nie bezig met me frau, te se me frau kan niet prood nie, ons se, ons wil me frau bewesmoek dat hier die mensen is, die mensen wat me frau in hier die area moet help.
And my, my heart bleeds that she's been suffocating whereas there are all these structures in place, including the ward committee.
En mijn hart blui om te weet dat me frau so verschmoren onder druk wordt met al hier die kwesties, maar die is plaatselijke mensen wat me frau kan ha.
Se bo du la, du la se talosa ko hore eh, ke bo toko tata kahora hawa krea.
In essence, I was saying, can you just utilize this eh democratic institution to raise concern? That's the reason why they are there, and what councillor, what committee deals with the issues that relates to the concerns of the communities.
En desu kom ons voor me frau se, die wijksraadslid, je, dit is die mensen wat die kwesties van die gemeenschappen ansprek plaatselijk.
And that's when your issues get to the municipality, the municipalities, your first point of entry, they have got a little way to communicate with whichever department if there are issues that are not going right.
En van daaraf gaan het naar die municipiteit toe, die municipiteit is manier om dingen antesprek en boentoe te verheef om hier die kwesties antesprek.
Unless she's telling me this is a different situation in this municipality and will then, Elisa guys here as well, will be able to elevate that matter.
En als i voor ons se dat die municipiteit nie hi so voor i die werk doenie, dan is salka iso en ons kan met helle door word gesaals.
And then, not that we don't want to come to people, if indeed then, that's why we're saying, people are free to raise whatever they want to raise, but be mindful of the time, not also to defeat what we are here for. But if there are complaints, we are noting them and then we'll escalate, that's why the municipality is here, certain issues they will be able to respond to. If there are matter that of provincial competence, I've said earlier, I can then escalate them, but let's be mindful of the time and first focus on what I've asked her to deal with first, the bill. And then she has not done that, so we know that people have got so many complaints, even in my earlier remarks, I said that, I know some of you too courage, because we know there's been a protest on service delivery issues here, we are aware of that.
So, me frau, ons wijzini waagini, ons, me frau die democratisch ragede, om niet te prood met ons en te gesaals, en desu kom ons van die begin af gezet, as enig iemand ander dienstleveringskwesties heet, kan helle vrijvuld met het uit de lever. Maar om eerst te focussen op die wetsontwaartje en met die oer blijvende tijd, dan te prood door andere dienstleveringskwesties. Ons verstand dat die so was op tocht geweest, oer dienstleveringsproblemen wat die ervoor. En desu kom ek se, as a blief, kom ons focussen en wees bewes van ons tijd wat ons hi heet, ons focussen op die wetsontwaartje en dan dan nou kan ons prood door andere kwesties wat die plaatsvindt.
And I'm relabelly informed that you are a ward committee member, that ward makes matters always on my part now.
En ak word ingeluk dat, dat i een wijks commissie lid is, en desu word die kwestie naar voor mij aargermog.
Am I wrong that you are a ward committee member?
Is het raad dat i een wijks commissie lid is?
Lid commissie met die naam, want ek is nog geen training gehiend, dat ek weet wat is me werk, as ek training gehiend is, dan weet ek wat is me werk.
Not yet, I have not yet received the necessary training, so I, I don't know what specifically my job is, because I haven't received training.
There's something wrong then in this municipality, if that is the case.
As dit i gefalle is, daar iets groot fout in hier die municipiteit.
Yes, we know now, we have known that, the mayor, you need to deal with that, because you can't just put people in position and then you don't make them to be effective.
Nou weet ons dat die probleem is, de mens kan niet mensen in een positie plaats, en dan hoe gaan ons weet of helle effectief kan wees?
Because in there I see, she doesn't even know what is her role, the way she's saying that.
Want ek zie nou, me frau weet nie wat haar rol is, dus wat ze hi voor ons af gezet nie.
And then we are almost, how many years since this new councillor has come to play, since twenty, twenty twenty one?
So ons is nou hoeveel jaar?
To me, this ward committee has not yet been trained.
So ons is al voor hoeveel jaar, van 2021 af, wat hier die nieuwe municipiteit dan bewind is, en hier die wijkscommissie lid is nog steeds nie, nog steeds nie opleiding ontvang nie?
And that's the first thing that you do when you come into office.
Dit is die eerste ding wat persoon moet doen als helle die amperkje.
Good structures, train them, make people understand what is their role and responsibility, and then feed back every man to communities, those are the basic things that are prescribed by the law.
Die basisse goed wat hier i weet voor gescreven is dat die mensen moet opgelaid worden om te weet wat die stratiër is. Van daaraf moet helle elke monterigvoering geheer aan helle gemeenschappen, dit is die basisse doel.
So I'm not against you, and I know you're overwhelmed, and but that's why I was very upfront to say, normally in hearings like this, we'll hear the service delivery issues here. Then we'll raise this with our counter-part committee in parliament, the beauty about it, also the chairperson of the NCOP comes from this province, this is the matter that we're gonna escalate with eh.
So, ak is, ak is niet den me frau, ak verstand wat me frau van nou kom, ak verstand me frau is oerhouda. En wat goed is met hieri is ons kan met ons collega's, kan ons een gesprak treen, de NRVP is ook in hier die provincie.
You can see this is a matter that must be number one priority in your agenda when you report to your political principals.
En salka is waki, i kan weer dat hier die nummer en agenda van i moet wees, om terug te rapporteer.
This is a matter we have developed interest in this portfolio committee, can I then draw you to the attention of the bill? I'm gonna talk to my counterparts in Kokta to have a main focus on this area, I can assure you that I'm coming from there, we used to do that, then we can see there's a problem. But you can, can I plead with all of you now? We focus on the bill, don't take too much time on service, I like, if the others have already raised the issue of service delivery, we are noting them, for the sake of progress, dear people. I know you are hungry to see a public representative and you see it's an opportunity for you, I can see that, I've observed that.
Ak verstand dat, ak verstand dat die is, en ons gaan hier die kwestie ankort aan righ, en dasal ander geheer word ofer, ak frau na vijas a blief, kan ons terugbewegen naar die wetsontwaartje. As die andere persoon ook kroch operet wat i kroage se, as a blief, ons verstand dat is dienstleveringskwesties in hier die area, man kan ons as a blief bewes wees van ons tijd wat ons is somit, en terugbewegen naar die wetsontwaartje.
The beauty about it here, we are different political parties, is incumbent on all of us now to talk to our counterparts who are down here, to look at these matters, because we've seen this is a problem.
Ons is verschillende personen wat hier op hier die commissie is, en ons kan met ons collega's prood wat op ander commissie is, so word ons hier die problemen kan ansprek.
Because I'm very much worried, in your position, you should be the person providing solution to all these people that are here.
Ak is waardelijk bekommend, want i wat i in die positie is, moet i voor die mensen wat hi is, die noire geleiding kan geheer.
Being that member of that ward committee, because this is what ward committees do, take issues of the people, bring them to the municipality, that's what informs the IDP and the planning processes of the municipality.
Dit is wat een wijkscommissie moet doen, de kwesties van die mensen vat naar die municipiteit toe, dit is wat die beplanningsvalse inkop, die UVP, dit is wat word dit gaan.
I can observe it, this zangcha here, I can see it.
Ak kan zien das, das so is iets die wat nie pleiste sien nie.
And then that should only be done now, eh, as a blief, my sisi.
Ba ya danki, ba ya danki, nou je me ook nou wijz gemaak, nou je me ook me kop op gemaak, nou weet ek in die vervolg, want toen met ek sta, maar ek is blei helle, may helle ak is zo lang loopi en dan kom helle na 10 jaar weer terugi. Loop helle en kom helle goed terug.
Thank you so much, you've really opened my mind and you've made me wiser, please don't stay away for the next 10 years, please come back soon.
Public representatives, dear colleagues, and I understand your frustration, honestly, I do sympathize with you.
Ka u to ke lutu la bu choko lena ke atalo hani, di kweklo se le, se le le banen le so na.
I het publieke vertegenwoordiger, en ak verstand i frustratie.
I feel for you.
Ke kea lutu la bu choko ka se.
And then this is a matter we'll raise it with our principals as we go back to parliament as well.
Ke ta ba elo hore retoho, kha kisalawa ko me di barona, harbuala murahka ko parlemente.
And I emphasize, we don't take you for granted.
Ke aha tella hore eh seki si buan se toho di raha la, ela yalo, le hore di tsalo talana di bu tok.
Mijn hart blui voor i, en i moet weet dat ons nie hier die kwestie net so ignoriër nie.
All of us seated in this top table, we know you pay our salaries.
Eh ka, kaufela haro na ya ka riduti motafoleen raizo, hore kare ke lo na le ba le patela mo holo waro na.
Allemaal van ons wat die boer hier die tovel set, weet i betal en ik ons salaris.
And ours is to serve you.
Ronati roya, Ronakohora re li di reele.
En ons waar gesom it a di.
I think I've made myself clear, we're not taking you for granted, any other thing that you have raised, I've got a team of administrators who are recording whatever you are saying. And then we'll refer these matters to the relevant departments and we'll follow up until we realize your matters are attended to, because it's our duty to do that.
Kea lece pisah hore, khaso hore realizasiya di kantso sole, se le di kha kisise mor, toho ni fitisa re di bua le ba khanke di, re di fitisa se le ko pele. Eh ho ba, ne ke di klanse bu toko, se lo hore di tsanse di, di ra ra buli we, eh mo kalene te fatse hore, ke se lo, se lo, se toho di raha.
And these two that are seated here with us, they are not just here to decorate our table.
Kante bawa bedi ba ba du si mo pe motafoleen lorona, khaba du la fela hore ba kabi se tafo la, eh?
I can assure you colleagues, we are going to hold you accountable for all these issues that people have raised. Out of this meeting, you are going to report back to your political principals and come with clear timelines on when are you resolving the issues these communities are raising. And this is a matter that will follow up on you.
Kea lece pisah, ba di ru mo ho hore di ta ba sole, se se kha kile mo chotso, toho re li karabel, kahora kiri lo se lo hore eh ba ba, ba, ba du di balla kato, na di ngongore chotse otsog. Retschanser en te fatse hore di ara rabu la, ebila retoho hore harre so mo mo ko panon, eh, retoho di rase lo hore lerre fe na ko, ya hore eh di lo se le, leka beli di fe di se ne.
Ons collega's wat die set, set nie net hi voor die mooi gait nie, ons gaan helle anspreklik ha, en ons gaan opvolg hore hier die kwestie toer het uitgesorteer is.
I believe we are together now, all of us.
Ke atsepa hore ra u kisi sa na ya non.
Ak glo ons verstand me kor nou allemaal.
So let's not cloud that our public participation, as I said, I give you minutes, first talk to the bill, if there are issues that you also want to raise, bring them at the end, we'll note them. And refer them to the relevant people and we're going to follow up.
Eh keer kea ko pa soet, wekam, ko ke kupilen katen, ti mu lo ho, hore eh le simule, kahora ribu e, ka mulautomo oh. Er murahka mo, ebilo honele ka se nyandi, khanse diin se sa zamalane le mu lo tomo oh. Kante se se kape ko hore khalce pisah, hore di kantso di toho fitisa wa, ebila reko ne te fatse hore di ara rabu li.
Ak glo ons kan ha voortgaan met hieri, en glo mij dat dit wat die oper, en i begin, as a blief focussen op die wetsontwaartje, dan nou kan i die kwesties oper, ons heet is spani so wat da, dit to ander voorgeheer, en ons zal het aan hier die noirege collega's oergeheer.
Okay, I'm sorry to take your time, you can proceed.
Skiesek wat die tijd ons kan voortgaan.
Ak bo ke holle bohe, mo du la sitilo walakho talé.
Eh thank you, honorable chapason.
Danki ach por de voersitter.
Obu angano, ke Gilbert Moro Tiba.
My name is Gilbert Moro Tiba.
My name is Gilbert Moro Tiba.
Ho joko maspalen, wa katalopele, local municipality of Diamond Scale, from Katalong local municipality Diamond Scale.
Ak is van, god la long, plaatselijke municipiteit, op Diamond Scale?
Ki dumalana, le mo la utomo oh.
Eh I, I support this bill.
Ak ondersteun hier die wetsontwaartje?
Ho nele hayan na bu hita, mu di nten se di la te lang.
Eh because of the following aspects.
As gevolgen, folgende redes.
Nro ko pa hora parlemente, Ronaja karele eh balimi, balimirui.
We are asking our parliament as farmers.
Ons frau voor die parlement namens die boeren?
Meri ruile, mu le hatting la maspala.
Eh because we are farming on municipal land.
Want ons boer municipal grond?
Karena di, di tima molelo ba haichu korona ruetsion hore ne ko maspalen waro.
Eh there is no eh fire station eh at our municipality.
Dus geen brandvierstoes in ons municipiteit nie?
Hamo le lo ru la ba haichu, harena se residira.
Eh when there are fires, we are helpless.
Wan het door brandes, ons ons opeloes?
Ro shebele la ela, hui talla, mo nga, cho ha, sheba, hore lo ho di mo kilawa, le a sha.
We just eh look at eh at it until, until it distracts eh whatever we have.
Ons kijk net naar die brand, toer het alles afbrand en se part.
So nro ko pa parlemente hore ke, ke re se ke haletebe, hore ke re neye eh di tima molelo ba haichu.
Eh we are asking the parliament eh to intervene eh by eh bringing the fire stations closer to our places.
Ons frau voor die parlement om ingegrijp, om brandvierstoesis noe bijer te brengen aan ons.
Bo nyanya ne harena le se se karapantela, se pasibiza marke fire line.
Eh we also do not have the fire line.
Ons het ook nie brandstoeken nie?
Ya ga ki wutule mo du la sitilo, aha tella la hore, fire line e boh ho kahora, er hamo lo ru nya, oska wa kele la, we, la te la ku di kampense di.
Like the chairperson has emphasized that eh the, the fire breaks are very important so that the fire cannot eh spill, go into other eh places, surrounding places.
Dus word die voersitter klem opgeleid dat hier die brandstoeken ba belangrijk is, so dat die brandee kan springen van die een plak naar die folgende nie.
Mesabu hello, ke re hakusho ere se ke haletebe, ke re neyala di oteo. Ke re ney le ba tu babaka hurpele lo amba haichu, babaka emelana le melelo eh.
Eh again eh if the, the government makes that intervention and provide us with those, those resources, we are making a humble plea eh for them to train people in our community who will be able to respond as and when required.
As die regering ons nie derige pleidwei so, voor ons, zal dan toestaan, zal ons dan frau as a blief, dat dit is mensen in ons gemeenschappen opgelijk kan word, om hier noirege vaardige redde om hier die brandet te bestrijd.
Ja kari iti, mo le lo, ole, ole kosita ta, godhokka kaba tuaba rubele chewing, baklo se ho.
Because we know that fire is dangerous, so we need highly skilled people.
Want ons weet vier is gevaarlijk, en ons het mensen noorig wat die noire gevaardig gerheid.
Mo du la sitilo, kea le bo.
Thank you very much, chapason.
Ba ya danki voersitter.
Thank you so much for your input, it's much appreciated.
Rea le boh, ha tata ka di swalo sahah, hore rea, rea di le boh.
Ba ya danki fe enso, ons war di erdet.
Eh kea le boh alena, mo du la stulo.
Eh thank you chapason.
Ba ya danki voersitter.
Eh yo emi na buamo ke Pule, Chara Kakora.
My name is Pule Kakora.
My name is Pule Kakora.
Eh lena ke choa ko eh le, ko, ko, kunthengele ya, ba ibiza marke Katalopele, Daniskil municipality.
I am from eh Katalopele eh Daniskil municipality.
Ak is van, kahu pele, Donjelskayo municipiteit.
Eh mo chermano, ubuile hotla lasia tla.
Eh the chairperson has made a valid contribution.
Die voersittere te woordevolle bijdrage lewe.
Eh with regards to the bill.
Ma ba, ma ba billi mulautomo.
En kan helle die wetsontwaartje?
Kajalo, na ke emi mo ke, ke supporta billi.
I stand here supporting the bill.
Ak stond hie nek ondersteun die wetsontwaartje?
Eh se bu ses, se etang ho chahu bua honea no.
The previous speaker.
Die vorige persoon met geprood eh?
Eh we are farming together.
Re le ma mo ho.
Ons boer shan.
So most of the challenges and frustrations, they would raise.
So most of the challenges and frustrations, they would raise it. Wele akahie, she raised most of the challenges that we face. So hakina bi ki buwata on the challenges. I'm not going to be long on the challenges.
Sa it meste van i questions gooper and I ga na ni langva to omi the questions antesprekne.
The only issue that I'm going to raise here is that, kine kara ta if parliament? Nka eke tokho i kahisang is that I would like if the parliament.
Di naxdang otako froas as i parliament muntlekkan?
Katse kisa no le local government. Operating with the local government?
So my plasike regering kanwar.
Abatla di rachore, di issues todesi di raise it. Baia huthula hatse ba kopane, ba planene and ba ensure that local government it's a this responsibility. After this meeting, they must consult with them, they must speak about all the issues, service delivery issues that were raised in here so that the municipality can take responsibility and deal with those issues.
Now i vergadering mitlasa belief ba mekarkom so that the minister tait anspreklikau kanwo and i questions kanan, anfar in uakde kan outsortier.
Baia huthula okuba kihin, baia huba thlosi tza hori. What is this all about? I mean, we billi kika ha eh ne? And then huchuing moa ke tza hori. After everything, re tla kwanahui itso hori tota tota, aho buaka di failed fires eh? Ki nse chansin residere ya kara le ba achi? They must go back to the community and explain exactly what these failed fires are about so that the community can know exactly what is happening about these failed fires.
Hala mu terga na i gemeenskapetu and verdaidlik wower ga ni the failed brande. The menso in i gemeenskap mu we had wower ni the failed brande in i question ga.
Aki kunusetsa, kine kitla rata parliamenta leonitla, monakungitla. Leruna bari 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 tele mu bahisa ni mu Daniel Scale. In conclusion, I would like that in future, the parliament must also visit us at Saker Scale. In Daniel Scale.
Don.
Daniel, Daniel. Sorry, Daniel Scale.
In i tokomso os grofrofrori parliament as a belief ba in Daniel Scale ba ons drakomok.
Hori tota hori ki diri wikoelobo, kaisi tamae kati lip parliamenta ya ya sheba hori huila halan koli hatzinglela Daniel Scale lili. Because the parliament has not gone to Daniel Scale for oversight.
The parliamente nogi kuwasha glewe in Daniel Scale ne.
Kama kaluki re kia leboha, mudula stulo, danki. Thank you very much, Chair.
Baia danki, thank you.
Kereke dumedise, le kokolotle mu parlamenting.
Greetings to all honorable members of the parliament.
I greet all achpare leda for the parliament.
Mpotapotiling. Le baba mpotapotiling.
And all those accompanying her.
And amal wat feela anslight.
Okay, obuayangwa ke kia leboha seboko, kujaski fonte.
My name is Kialebokha Seboko.
My name is Kialebokha Leboko, from Skowfontein.
Ki bua kile le jorola kosi?
I'm speaking as someone who comes from, as the assistant of the royalty.
Ak protnomans di koninklakis?
Ki utlu suabutshoko ke hori, kuski fonte ne re tropolojo mu mu maspalen waro tantsaban.
I am saddened by the fact that we are not considered by Kankabani Municipality as our community.
Akis artier or i fai that ons ni uerveeg woard, dear the municipality taitne?
San taki kaha di piro zele hori hua iriwa mu bu di soling. San taki hori hua iriwa kubu di soling. Soling. Di sola.
Secondly, is because of the issue of the employment or the solar.
Tu edansese kesi wat os permete frisongkra?
Rona baba onharre bereki, salerisene hona kuski fonte ne kujoka nineteen ninety eight. Hui talala lo kompiye nu ya na kaisi bere bereke hopi.
Some of us are not working, we've been staying there since nineteen ninety eight and we have, we were not employed since then.
But i for ons wora woen ons it van nineteen ninety nine eighty off ni work ni of ah ninety nine from the off ni, dos ni work ni ons blau fandora fandori aria.
Li tabolo lokoski fonte ne kuma sutra di kadiyo, karena di toilette, akona pumezi eloranga zehwa.
There is no development in our community, there are no toilets, there is no water.
Dos gen ontwikling matplasvente ons gemeenskap ne, dos gen toilette ne, dos gen water.
Haru chunchori bisi ambulance, haru chunchori fu ne ne kujaku Apington.
And when we need ambulance services, we must call them from Apington.
And os os ambulanzdiensten noragait mu ons ala inroo van Apington af.
Abatla hori kuski fonte ne kohotla gule tar.
When they come, they take a long time and it is very late most of the time when they arrive.
Van hala ba ons ankoom is it baia lot al and it fatle baia langkum da aitakom.
Ki utlu suabutshoko kapeke, le fa palenewo le loringke la land reform.
I'm also saddened by one department, the Department of Land Reform.
Dos oke departmente departmente van grond erforming wat my baia artier mo.
Lele hori le kaperitse, hori batu ba, ba bu kosi bakonkle, ki CPAI bu sang.
They said that because of the CPA and that the traditional leadership are not considered.
Hala xesa fofo ni CPAO so li tradisionale laishka ni uerveeg woard ni.
Nakile kia leboha Seboko ya na, kaki tchagalele le mu beneficial listing ya te.
I do not even appear on their beneficiary list.
Ak verskaini as opelbe ginstak de laisne?
Ki putza hori kin, na hori ki choka, kahore ki sali kitlaka pudukho kujaukwa nokwa. Hakimutlatsi kahamme wa kaki nali, kuki nan te kusitshinsak.
I am asking myself why I treat it like that, because I am no longer under my parents, I have my own stand.
And I promise afi froh, gukumurtak swantier, ak wuni ba 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 auirshni, akitma aya standplas.
Kineki kupa hori mu parlamenting, bu kosi bu hona koe tlabosei wazi ya. Re siwele runarale batu, reskabera kapele kuma raho. Hori hona koe tla ri dirisanalone maspala, kauri di lotse di mu hao chuncho utle mu maspalen. Ena hori chuncho utne mo se se toropo, usi mo se se toropo. Walele motwele orinki motuas, mo se se le khae.
I am asking this, I'm humbly asking this parliament to consider traditional leadership because it seems like the municipality does not consider us. Hence, I'm asking the parliament to consider and assist us in these issues.
Ak fro nederag for the parliament um ons ta help metiri kesi, wan it like for me as a minister tait ni di tradisionale laishan achneemne. Desigumak fro for the parliament as a belief help ons.
Kineki awalwa kin troka two thousand and twenty one, katla hotla hotla itse kia ya hona mu maspala.
My, my house was destroyed in twenty...
Twenty one?
Twenty twenty one and I went to ask for assistance from the municipality, but I was not assisted.
Ma isis in twenty one and twenty one vernitig and ik it grofrofri ni mani se pleit for hope ma le it mani gehaukni.
Ki tumelak hori ke bana?
Can we come to what we are here for? You have exhausted all your five minutes. With due respect, I allowed you because you said you're coming from the traditional leadership. Kia kupa te.
Kineki kopa hori re tla monching eka hori o, se se ofelecebe, na kwa kha kya mi se se mi tchanu ere le bezinio na. Ifela khasunku, akawabua kama la thomo kileka di di malafeela, kahobano lonali zele kaka kubu kosi.
Kan os as a belief tergekum na ons u komusi es. Ak it for me frau extra tait geje man i it gesee kom van 14 wordi tradisionale laish. Ma kan os as a belief trechpa veegdo yan.
Ke tla itumelako hori, re hona koe tla re, akelo shone station esewa hori, re hona koe tla re, trainiwa. Re hona koe zo hori, erhamolero urunya, reka hona kau itselela ya kau di.
We will appreciate it a lot if we can have a fire station in our communities and be empowered with training so that when there are failures, we are able to deal with the situation.
Ons u dat vardiere so brandverstosis in ons aria so wesen atos opelingsokre so it osa failed brand kan bestre.
I thought you were going to say it's a good thing we empower these traditional leaders now to enforce this bill.
Ne kenakana hori uno oreke intesi aming, hobani rifile ba etapele di ba file, hori ba hona, hori ebana, basa maysa mu kumulau oh.
Aganagaduk me frau gan se is blai dat tradisionale laish bemachtak kanwo, dear i the weightgeving.
Ki tumesilu loror.
Thank you very much.
Baia danki.
Thank you so much. Next speaker please.
Folgner person as a belief?
Right. My name is Lunga Lisua and I'm a resident here. Libisolaka ke bakansilwane ke mu ahimo. Lunga, my name is Lunga.
Gue dha ma nomis Lunga and akis inwoner von i the aria?
I stay in Posmansberg.
Ak woen in Posmansberg?
Yeah, I'm in Posmansberg. And I want to say I welcome the bill, but however with few consents.
Aki batla hori ke amokala mulau oh, lelo hori hona le di nklatsa malasekbatan kohi kahis.
Ak wil say ak verwaukum i weitzundwar ma osa por bekumernessa wat ak wil aitlag.
If you can look in this hall.
Xarika leba mo hulonge.
As i kai knedna i the soul.
You can see that, if I'm not mistaken, it's ninety percent of black people in this hall.
Xakesa fosere na le ninety percent ya batu baba nsu kamo harcha holo eh?
As i no ni verkiertes ne, it ninety percent van i menso wat i set is white menso.
And then we have few numbers of the white people in this hall.
Renale palo ebba ekotlase ya makowa kamo harcha holo eh?
Is a por bit menso in i soul wak?
But looking and hearing from the presentation of the bill, in my understanding, it's like this presentation was not focusing on the real issue.
Kamkoki lenka lebela di kahiso, di titinyo temo, mulautomo oh. Ke bona inkare winse batsona, redine disalebele taba ebutokwa.
As ons kai knedna i vorlagering van i the weitzundwar wat gedunes froer, like it ni as of di wartlike kesi angesprekis ne?
Because I got a thought, I've heard, I've heard the name failed fire be mentioned. And that thing specifically, if you can listen to it, it deals with the farmers.
Hobani ki utwile ma foko au adrisiseen, akahubua kamo lo, kubuleka fail, kamelo ya ya khaa. Kanti kha, xarika lemedisa inkla eosentle, era hori ibua kabalimi ba makowa.
Over specific verwaist na a failed brand. And that verwaist specific na bure.
And now, when you go to the locations.
Ya no kha oya komakeshening.
And as menso na na di plaqetu gaan?
You find that there is no, especially in this place, you find that there is no fire service that is in the location.
Se kolosetona motulon ea rona eh, kahona di timamolo, kapati rela di timamolo motoro ponyarona.
Then soli befin da dohien brandverdinsde i so es ne?
And I'm going to make a plea to the government or to the parliament that, you know, these are the people who have a serious, people who don't have a problem, they are not even here. So when we deal with the issue, we should focus on where the problem is, this is my point. Let's remove these fire stations in towns because those people, they have, they don't have a problem. Let's put them in a place there in the location so that when fire comes out in the location, we can be able to stop the fire very quickly because those who don't have a problem, they undermine you, you are here. They're not even coming to listen to what we have to say because they are seated without a problem.
Na ne kere kamkoi lenka ten, ke kahisa hori. Honelidi timamolo, di kosi wekwa di toropo, di kiswe moli keshino hobani. Batu baba duzi mokebo ana, batu baba khorbanale ma tata. Ya no na ne ke kopa he hori, di kosi we, di kisi we, bua ma keshene. Hor, kabu tataboleti, batu baba hona hori baba batu sehe. Hobani didi bayileko, ilon hori batu ba obana, kaba na tabalelo na ebila bale katala ya kala bana. Basatele mo di kopanunsaloo.
My voitgata, ons mu di the brandverstosis van i dorp afskaif na i lokasi tu. Farit na i menso tu wat it wartlik noragait. Van i menso wat ni es ne, es i menso wat ni problem ekeni. Alle ekeni, desi fala problem di brande ne. So, ena legi ni norageres bakomina tu te komo, vite weisomidi oteneemne. So komos veskaifi brandverstosis, ums uskaif na i lokasi tu for i menso wat it wartlik noragait.
And the second point, so that my five minutes, does it catch up with me? It is the point that even on the same thing of the failed or the fire control or the amendment on the fire control, it doesn't make sense that we are focusing on that failed fire whatsoever while we have people around here on the mountain view who don't have water in their houses. Why do we take water to stop the fire that is on the farming? I'll emphasize that one, on the farming. And yet we have our own people, there's no water in there. So I want to challenge you that first before we focus on that one, let's give our people water.
Sabu, ntlae woyabobe di kohore, kamkhona keli mu kilenka ten mu mulau oh. Hona le di nklatsa hori, kudirisua mezi koi di timamolelo. Ifela batu ba achi, kaba na mezi. Ya no kiba kha hori, re katalayona ntlae woy. Ya hori, are kose mezi au, re fe batu barona mezi, kahor batok.
Di tu edri kesi wat ago opertfuer my five minute vorbei is, is i kesi van i the failed brande and i water wat ons gebraik om la te bestre. Ons it os ai menso i bu in mountain view, wat ni water ekeni. So how kom ga ons water gebraik? Om landereia van bure se failed brand ma i the menso it ni as water ne. How kom begin ons ni ba i the begin and veska water an dori menso ne?
And then the last point that I want to submit today is that we are surrounded by mines, yes? And the reality is that mines are making a lot of money in our area. And therefore, it is necessary, you can look at this hall, it's not in good conditions. That means mines are not doing anything. So we add that mines must build this town. And they must not give small, small things and then thinking like they are doing favors to this place. They must build it because they are benefiting from the place. And also the youth must get the real deals when it comes to their business. They must not be undermined, they must be considered in business making, thank you.
Se se kapeko hori, tu lo ea rona ki tu lo ya di mine, kanti di mine se, di dira chalate enti tata. Ifela kauka lebela, mu li keshene la rona kotsana le holo eh? Le bona kamkoi lenka ten, haemobu ya mu mbobunkle. So ne rakopa hori di mine se, di kadi ri tu se mu se chabe. Hori di di ahe, di ri ahele mu le hori di hona hori di tu se, kotsala pele. Se se kapeko hori, rakopa hori balebele ba cha, bakona hori batu se ba cha, kadi projecte zabo ana hori di hona hori di tza le pe.
Then i last ding is i the door word om ring deer mine. And i mine mu hala deeldun, hala mu di the door bu. Soz wat i kan si na i the sound ne ne waagwe tu stand ne. Ma i mine mu wuni ni di vordeel kantraak ne. Hala mu bau an i the door, hala mu tergeje van hala kara traak vordeel ait i the grond ait. And then vilak wak say, di yug, di yugtiktes mu ni net afgeyak woard ne. Hala mu wak vole besigaisgaleenke regeje woard so that hala wak kangrui, baia danki.
Good day to everyone. I don't know if we are on the same boat, but my problem is this.
You must start with your name.
According to my...
You must start with your name so that we know who are we speaking to.
Did you hear me? Yes, I am Benson Seboko from Skowfontein.
My name is Benson Seboko from Skowfontein.
Yeah, I don't know if we are on the same boat, but according to my understanding, it's about fires.
Ak we teni vos amal...
Ifela kha kisisa kaka ke kaba kala kuru ya kamelelo.
Ak we teni vos amal obisa of the boat is ne ma ak dohuns protwor failed brand.
Yes, what I understand, we are living in a rural area. I don't know can the government maybe use a greater to to boundaries according to the camps.
Okay, slow down for the interpreters as well, nee? And you are raising, you understand what you are doing.
Another question, can I ask another question? Uh the other question is this uh what I know where I was working there are younger people which is being trained to fight fire so that's what I'm asking uh let us give our younger uh children sisters to go to training to fight failed fires.
Maar de regering aan het vroer is.
Eh that's all I have.
Kan ons het lief grens?
You support the bill because what you are saying is provided for in the bill.
Yes, I support it.
You support the bill?
Yeah, no problem.
So what I can plead with you you have been given a green page there the green paper can you show him sesi there's a green paper next to you this green paper it says everything in detail what you are saying there and it goes further to that so can I plead with you you further read that one and then once you have read it because I know you've got some constructive inputs you can submit your comments in writing after having read that what you feel has been omitted or what need to be enhanced in that document. Thank you so much.
Rea lebocha tataka tsaylo ya lo na eh hobanachalawitidi tabatsaha ho ele tota eh lebochila tataka din tatahurikahisisen hoban e din tatahurukubuakatsana ke din tatahurikahisene lohore di teng mo mulao kumongo eh bilan ne ke kopache hore o obale mo hore konne hore witi sentle eh ka zona di di ka kana se se lohore di teng mo mulao kumongo.
Baja dankje meneer. Kan meneer het lief die gruen blauwke deellezen? Net praat precies waar wat de meneer dan verwijzing te maken. Als nou het meneer het gelezen het, als het lief kan hij dan hij insalje weer dit invol voor ons en ingee zo dat dit wat is die enige verbetering we opmerking wil he, als het lief dit ook voor ons moet indien. Baja dankje.
We exhausted the first group. Do I have some people have a overflow who still want to come in and raise issues?
Hoedus is hier die eerste?
Refedite kasit kopa sa ronasapele.
I'm still coming to you. I just want to deal with the overflow first.
Ne ke kloholatela ka ba tu balo hore ba mo eh rumuela ekale chalo hore ba temba temo eh rekonno hore sona pe.
So you can come people from this side now can come and occupy the chairs.
Goed, mensen aan hier achterkant kan nu het sertlakken betrekken.
Eh la konne hore le sona pe le lidula mo di tulon se.
Is it only four?
Het was lang spier.
We have more people come and occupy those chairs raise your hand and come and sit here.
Steek het lief je hand op en kom sit in die middel als je iets wil zeggen.
Eh misa matsohore eh alifeta le samali lidula mo di tulon se.
Those that are moving out can they do it also quietly without disrupting this proceedings please?
Ne ke kopache hore ba so lan konklele so katidi malo eh kamochi sona pe.
Daarmee seneer kan ons verschenkt dat hij wat uitbeweeg, als het lief dit, ik stilweg zal doen.
You can proceed. Oké, lebocha munde stilo. Koja koolle parlamenten.
I want to say thank you to the chair from the parliament.
Ik wil graag dankje zeggen aan die voorstatter van die parlement.
Wesi ki tu meze da ta ka hore eh molilo o orutwiki sabro.
I am very glad that we speak about this subject because fire is a big problem.
Ik is baya blij dat ons praat over hier die onderwerp van branden is een baya belangrijke kwestie.
How ru yakuhoro nanaki nakina Elizabeth Mohabedi koja ko Maramani.
I am Elizabeth Mohabedi from Maramani.
Ik is Elizabeth Morabedi van Maramani.
Hamolilo o o taha kurira riska reza bana barona reza ya ni kheti re tanyamo mezing re bezamoloe kenakuruskatla mama kun arona.
What happens is that whenever there are failed fires we take a risk we take some sacks we actually eh put them into the water to make them a bit heavier so that we can use them to put out fire and we do so with our little ones.
Wanneer daar een brand ontstaan, neem ons gevaarlijke risico's. Ons gebruikt bijvoorbeeld zakken wat ons naad maakt met water en ons gebruikt het om die branden te bestrijden en ons doen het zelfs met ons kinders bij ons.
Genen ki tumela hore da taru haloka ritusa parlamentelwar ba ta ba tulaba ripela hore er hamo lo o twang brukonno hoi hens araba no robeleka katsele intingya.
So now we are very glad that you are here as parliament and the aim of yours is to have people trained to come and show us as to what to do how to handle fire should it erupt?
Ons is baya blij die parlement is hier met hier die doelstelling om opleiding te bied zo dat ons geleer kan worden en gelijken wordt hoe om branden te bestrijden.
Mo duas stilo ke kopache oncha mama drong ke kopache le kabine kabine te ya hao ruri ki tsumo kilen pila ke keemka keemya na ha. Tuleaka ibo choko moti wisi bi kana ka tuhaka suloka lela ka hore asseke taramo Maramani ka two thousand and eight.
Okay, chair can I ask you to please look me straight into the are you and the members of your committee I am a very struggling person eh I came here moving into Maramani in two thousand and eight and inside in my heart I'm hurting a lot.
Voorstatter, ik wil als het lief bij i het blij, kijk mij in die oor. Want ik is van al van 2008 af hier en my heart is stikend. Ik ik kom van Maramani af en my heart is stikend.
Belaga ibo choko eh ne klikke tinggal lela marakwa tlukulela ku tlukulela shuar because ku tlukubu.
My my heart is sore I always want to cry but I don't want to cry I really want to speak.
Maar dit is hier, ik wil altijd heil maar eigenlijk wil ik ook niet praat.
Ki tlibo Maramani ka two thousand and eight bana barona batsona school mo Postman.
I came into Maramani in two thousand and eight and our children are schooling in Po in Postmasberg.
Ik het in 2008 Maramani toegekomen, mijn kinders gaan school in Postmasberg.
Baba nyinyale hommarika two thousand and re buzoike CPA.
Eh they are very young and they go through terrible winters and we've been under the leadership of CPA since two thousand and eight.
Helle, helle gaan die er verskrakkeke ka we winters hier ook in nee, ons krijg besware. Ons het al ook die laierskap, wat ons onder is is die gemeenschapsbeveiligingsorganisatie?
Re buzoike CPA CPA yare re di kulukuleki di mine mo di mine neze ha kizura ha di timadi di tama di CPA ere kapi len e ha edulu ku Maramani ba dula ku ku du mani mama kunadi upstairs edula mo di shenti for fifteen years.
Right and then what what happens is that we have been governed by CPA from since two thousand and eight and we actually wondering because CPA is in an area that is surrounded by mining there is a lot of mining industry and we wonder if there is any money which they actually give out to help us these people from CPA they don't even live here in Maramani they live. They they live in Kuruman actually in some double story houses.
Oos het mensen van CPA wat in Kuruman blij, in dubbel verdieping huisse wat niks voor ons doen in die afgelopen vijftien jaar nee. Ons woont hier in gebieden wat omring is der mine en ons krijt nie help nee, tas nee voor ons geld nee. Ik weet niet of hier die mensen niet als geld heet nee, alweer helle zo leeks leven.
Helle ku harula hale ku di shenti ale ki di mine hale atlist fifteen minus or eight mines ale ki le konja malo ba la gana ki le ga roho ba la di ko kosna di ko ko na ki la ke wa ke rubegu na ke rubegu na na gana haru chisikikikikikikikikikikikikik pa me piko to Postman haru na kikikikikikikikikikikikikikikikikikikikikikikikikikikikik even lemmezi amemezi.
So what happens so what happens is that we live in shacks which actually are surrounded by a lot of mines but we actually have nothing to show as you can see my finger bandaged recently I actually went to gather some wood and then I got hurt in the process and you find that the mines that are there that could be benefiting us is maybe up to from eight up to some fifteen mines themselves we've got nothing we're suffering and it's been a problem for a very long time.
Ons wordt omring der mine waar ons woont en die mine doen niet absoluut niks voor ons nee. Ik het zelfs mijn vingersjeer gemaak en die poging om hout bij mekaar te maken en steeds ons ons leef en gehig is en armoede en ons is omring der acht tot vijftien mine wat niet mooi niks voor ons doen nee.
Mandag ba ba cha hore zaga pekuwa korona ku Maramani mandag ba cha hore zaga ku Maramani vier ba hubula ka pe mine mo di mega di mine di 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 sa di la le sip.
So this past Monday they they came to.
Ba roda karikri la le sip.
This past Monday.
Di sabadi sipi re ka li tri la le sipa ka ki buza ki ku ta mutoku di wa ka seka li ku di tusi ku loa ta ta ki ku 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 sa mutoku bana barona ba inka la ku suku le ha suku le secha ba na ka ba tre boote besa ka ba kriya boote ba asala mu suku le ki ba ta ta ka ba ki ba ta ta arona ba de ba Maramani. Sa ka beritok ba ta ba na mo Maramani.
Okay, we are.
Ya le ka ba mayte ya iti ba ka du ra swata ku barabari ki ku abutoku ka hore weke cha ho konne ho kakal weke ho konne ho ko chwan e bana ba ka ba ne ha ke suaku mbi noha bana ba ka ba ku sala ne ma ba ku sala mu e ki ku sa mutoku ki ku di di la ku Maramani ba ka ha ku la ku di di sa ku 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 e ke le mu e yo ne ku Maramani twenty eighty thirty we leka next clinic next square next sip we la mu di shenti. Nu ba ne ga u du sa mutoku ha ka du ba du sa mutoku.
So this past Monday they actually came to move us out again in Maramani with the main objective of establishing another mine and what happens is that they do all of these things all the time but we are not benefiting anything from this process we have young children who actually go to school and they don't even have a transport to eh transport to 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 transport them in fact if we do have it very often what happens is that not all our children are being brought back home by means of this particular transport now we need to fend for some money jump into the taxi go to the school area look for our children so that we can bring them back home the thing is that in our community there's basically nothing for all these eighteen years that have gone by we don't even have a clinic we don't even have the school so nothing that we have to show for in such a kind of an area that we live in so I'm really hurting and I'm crying and I'm saying can you please help us we standing here today speaking to you as government I want to believe that really the parliament knows me they know us because we've been facing you and speaking to you all along and here again we are still hemmering on the very same problems.
Niet maandag het ons verskrakelijke problemen gehad di mine na Maramani toegekomen met die doem om ons uit te schijf, om een nieuwe mine te stig. En helle doen niet absoluut niks voor ons, daar is geen voordeel voor ons, ons wordt niet verschijf. Daar is nie schoolvervoer nee, die kinders wordt met missies schoolte gevaten, soms ook nie kinders die is amel terug nee. Maar dus hebben nog geld bij mekaar om een taksie te krijgen, om die kinders te gaan zoeken en die kinders weer uitstoot te brengen. Dit is nou achttien jaar het ons het niks. Hier is nie kliniken nee, hier is nie voor ons kinders scholen nee. My heart is stikend en ik vrolijk voor je naar die parlement om mij te halen. En ik geloof je de ken me, je de werkt ons probleem maar dit voelt toch niet niks om meer van je.
Eh the issue of the the lady that has just finished talking now presenting it will be taken to the premier and other relevant stakeholders yeah I think we have also government eh I mean the local municipality that is here we can't really have community members who are still suffering like this this is this must come true and we had it with the other part eh government partners or government departments can we just take the the next next speaker please you you must tell us about also the the bill whether you support it or not like the chairperson eh she's she has requested that you take five minutes not more than five minutes thank you.
Ja ka hotanusi dure ba ta hore leze five minutes eh is emfo fe da five minutes eh le bolela hore la amokala wili hort sa halen amokeli ela ja ka anatka losa milas kilo halis mulakutse kloga ya kon sa di chwaita lo.
Sproost, nee, die verieren zo goed is op die weetzundwaard en daar is na vijf minuten.
Okay, my name is Nikolas Stienkamp.
Mijn naam is Nikolas Stienkamp.
Eh ina lakaki eh Nikolas Stienkamp.
Abur van grunwater.
I'm a farmer from Grunwater.
An bo da van grunwater.
I'm a I'm a resident of Grunwater.
And a farmer.
And and I'm a farmer as well.
Eh ke bo le bi rooi ibele ke bo ni wa ko eh grunbanda.
Ik is blij, ver van dagla die parlement hier is.
I'm very glad and pleased to see that the parliament is here today.
Ki tumela fera tata hoban hore parlemente elefano kumpi no.
Zo dat la anonsa suke kan kan leesteren voor wat ons problemen is.
So that they can listen to our queries and our problems.
Ela hore ba ta ba konne hore reza di ngomo re sa rona lema tata aro.
Okay, ik respect wetgeving en verstellenis.
I respect the legislation that has been set up.
Ki ku ta leku du banana tata lebu lao o o robele tweng mo roo robele tweng.
Okay, want ik daar is in het, is baya aan het radische gelaat dat ons grunwaters Skayfontein en alleen plekken is voor CPA is woudaal, plek mag worden voor CPA is een gemeenschap.
So what I've seen is that the legislation makes provision for a lot of traditional leadership and organizations but where I come from in Grunwater we are under the CPA and I would request that provision also be made for organizations or people being governed under CPA.
Re tokama la fa fa hore ba la tomu utlao tomu o o bolela hore konne le boi di di pele eh pasi cho meko di twan teko grunwater Ronald Gussafan va di CPA ga da da ga leza hore la komu o o agare zen cha e chwan na le ku hore na hore konne di chula ki ente ja le ya boi di di pele.
Ik is blij daarvoor, omdat ik een boer is, wil ik net van dagla ja, zie er die brandoprondo fout branden.
I'm glad about this but being a farmer I would also like to share my heart a regarding failed fires.
Eh ki tumela se lo me ja ka ke lebu limi ke rata hore bolela zedi ku di sa mo choko mobilo nyane kan kayamilo e ya na ha.
Maydam is die wat ik schees, wat ik probeer schees, azan je graske si van afgebrandes kan ons als gemeenschap of ons van die preven dorp kan danilieven die dan naast die vlies.
What I would like to say if if there is no grass that can burn then us as farmers won't have grazing for cattle and we won't be able to farm.
Sekrata gusiguafan va ke hore ha osna ka hore ha roda ja ka balim araka geran na lema fu loh ma di polo hola sa ro.
My eerste punt is wat ik hier aan hierel wil zeggen, dat ons groot leemte is, als ons was baladit.
So the first point I would like to make which is something that's a huge vacancy and a big problem is our municipality.
So se la sandla sekra ta gusiguafan va se eneng eh sakhalasasutona sa buta daser nan le sona simu te kam as balawaro.
Ons was baladit die er brandvierwa van de dach op of een brandspit.
Our fire or our municipality does not have a fire engine or even just a fire hose of not to mention anything that they have. Our fire, our municipality does not have a fire engine or even just a fire hose of, not to mention anything, that they have firefighting.
Oons blij om treint vijfentwintend kilo's vanaf Postmasberg.
We are located about twenty-five kilometers from Postmasberg.
So, as a veldbrand is, moet ek persoonletsel of met kolomela minebier, of met piersminebier, of met raft engineeringbier, om ons te halen op die vier dubbel soogmatte.
So, should a feldfire or something break out, I would have to phone Kolomela Mine or the mine in Olifantuk. In Postmasberg to come and assist us to fight the feldfire.
My ander voorstel of my dag is op die, dat is by a person wat die veld aan die brand steem. De stransnet met de lokos, met diesel lokos, die weer mag aan ons grenzen. Dat is tien jaar geleden die helle veld afgebrand vanaf ons oftop voor Baiko Postfontein.
So, one of my other queries is, there are a lot of organizations responsible for feldfires. Amongst others is transnuit with the diesel locomotives, the military. We've experienced major feldfires ten years ago that stretched all the way to Quipmatsfontein.
So, mijn groot vraag is net wat die parlement wil naga. Is daar ja men hier dat helle voor ons kan helpen? Elkendor of see elk ses Grunwaterske konting, ned met de brandstweg, wat is kan op die bakie lijn. En als die veld brand, ek breed ondert zo goed als monlet kan keerle die te vergaan.
So, the big question I would pose to government is that is there no possibility to assist us in the smaller areas? To just provide us with a fire hose that can be mounted on a baki? That we can actually dispatch to areas that are experiencing feldfires?
En dan wil ik die laatste vraag wat ek ook aan helle vraag is. Is daar nie misschien een men hier om een brandpad rondom die woonwier te kan scrapen? Zodat sommige mensen steek veel hoe dan die brand en dan daarna verspreidief die die vier vanaf die is. Zodat daar nie men hier het parlement is kan helpen om een brandpad recht rondom die woonwier te kan scrapen, zodat die vier die kan naar die veld verspreiden.
So, the last question I would like to pose to parliament is, isn't there a possibility or a means to help us to have a fire road? Be erected around the suburbs to prevent fires from spreading outwards to near spots?
Ik zei bij de...
I thank you very much.
Thank you so much for your valuable input. Same for your persons. We have got seniors officials here that will be able to respond to the issues that you've raised.
Bye, dank je voor die enzo. Oos heet met senior behandels, behandeling hier, wat ik fraa so kan behandelen.
Good afternoon, madam chair and your colleagues. Everyone was here. Yes, I will start by saying that my name is Moshe, Moshe De Kretz. Moshe, Moshe De Kretz.
Ek wil graag voor e begin deer mij zou voortestal. My name is Moshe.
Ja, I'm the chairperson of the Grunwater community. Okay, so is it. Ja, I'm the chairperson of the Grunwater community.
Ik is blij dat van die Grunwater gemeenschap.
Ja, I think we as the leadership of Grunwater, we do support the amendment.
Als die gemeenschap van Grunwater oversteed, nou serie weet zo'n bar?
And I'm also happy that section two as amended where communal land were also included as part of that. But I would like the committee to go back and review section three whereby it talks about the leadership facilitating the fire protection association.
Daar wil ik graag nie fraa dat plus die tri has zien word, word of een fraa word we... bestand gebied word aan die brandbestrijdings associaasie.
Ja, the reason is that some of the communal lands that are there, they do not have the traditional leadership administering the land. So instead, the community democratically elects ten people who actually administer the land.
Die reepe die verschuk is dat van hierie grond nie noodwinde die er traditionele laagskapie hier of is dieer word nie marke gemeenschap de grond is. En tot dan ook jeder dieer mensen wat vergis is eigenlijk gemeenschapbeid, besteed word word in daardoor die beschuwne bestand verleden word.
Ja, another one is also amendment of section twenty-six where it talks about enforcement of the act by the leadership or maybe could be peace officers.
Dan artikel 20 wat dan over die opdonen van, wie die weten die er laagskapfriere is behandels, met werk nacht gaik word?
And also for the fire protection association, I think it is also crucial that before the authorities can be given authority actually to form the fire protection association. The CPA is okay to include it as well. They have to get training as peace officers. I mean with associations like the National Forests, that can work with a organization to help the leadership so that they become peace officers, firefighters. Because of in rural areas like Grunwater, we do really have serious problem when it comes to feldfires. Management also training to the people.
In die gemeenschap van Grunwater het ons probleem, wanneer het om bij brandbestrijding en opleiding. En oons wil graag fraa dat wanneer hierdie brandbestrijdings associaasies opgestel word, dat er opleiding gebied word aan hierdie veiligheidsbehandels, friedesbehandels en potentiële brandbestrijders aan die gemeenschap. Want dit is iets wat al niet anders mag bestaan nie.
Ja, I think that's all that I wanted to say. Some of the issues I would actually be repeating what has already been said by the others.
Thank you so much.
Dank je net. Dit is ook wat ek wil nu as ik daar nog wies is, nimsa dit herhaling is van de andere beschuwnesse enzo.
Greetings, honorels. Greetings, honorels. My name is Betty Fito from Stasi. I meant to say you look very beautiful by the way.
Now, Frisjeter, my name is Betty Fito. Ik is van Stasi. Ik wil nog verinklimateer prachtige vandaag uit.
I'm very, very grateful to see the parliament here present. Eh, I don't only have seen them in Abington. Now, this is my appeal. When we speak about the fire... So, we came from a meeting yesterday because some members of the parliament actually called us up for a meeting. Now, when we came back from this meeting... We found fire raging. And there were no fire extinguishers. And it had just been forty-eight hours people waiting for fire brigades.
Dat plekten die mensen maar nog achtveertig jaar lang aan mache, veri brandwering op de dag.
I am speaking about things that took place yesterday. In White City.
Ik praat van dingen wat gister plaatsgepint het in White City.
Parliament, I would like to say, do not come here, give us some promises and never betray. There are problems here in Postmasberg. There's a lot of them. Don't worry about them. We'll try and sort those ones out, but it's too many of them. So, I wanted to ask you, please, parliament... To train, to take the young people and actually train them to control fire. Because it doesn't really help you to come here to speak to us and then you disappear for two years. So now, I wanted to ask you, please, chair, don't come here for only a day and then we are going to see you again in twenty twenty-four. So, I wanted to ask you, please, take young people, train them to deal with fire because there's a lot of fire here. In fact, it even erupts in shitty houses or in the shekhs. So here in Postmasberg, there are elderly ones, senior citizens who have had the shekhs burning down without any fire brigades or fire extinguishers showing up.
Nou, hier in Postmasberg is het geval van, our bejaarde burgers, seniors, wie is gehig is of hij is nie afgebrand het en die brandwerking het het nie, nooit kom help nie.
We, like myself, have been to these trainings of how to control fire, but doesn't like me. I'm going to fall into the fire.
Maar daar was die na wat het over actief.
But if you want to bring people who are very active, I'm here. Okay. So what I want to say then is that as we were in a meeting yesterday, things that you are saying, are you really going to put them into application as a parliament? But I'm grateful, I must say.
Chairperson, please don't leave forever. Please come back.
So now, we've got a lot of problems and then with these problems, people who are supposed to be answerable are not there like our municipalities, but really here, I want to speak in their presence. So now, when our councillors are sitting here, they are actually being used as scapegoat, but now who are their seniors? Who are supposed to answer? Where are they? Thank you, chair. Along with your associates, I'm going to support you fully.
Ons is van hier die activisten. Okay.
Good afternoon.
Good afternoon.
My name is Edwin Besis.
My name is Edwin Besis. I'm from?
Genehaven.
Genehaven.
You're Edwin Besis, you're from Genehaven?
I'm the vice-chair of the educational committee.
So my first question is, if we do support this bill, what is the implication on small farmers?
So, what I want to say then is that, if we do support this bill, what is the implication on small farmers?
So, big farmers have insurance on their land, their houses, and their cattle.
What I mean is, these little farmers, who have insurance, if they have a brand, or their brand, or the community, they have a brand, they have a few brands, here is the bill, it will also provide for everyone.
So, what I'm trying to say is that, small farmers don't have insurance on their land, or on their cattle, or anything. So should a failed fire actually get to their property and burn their cattle, or their houses, or anything? Will this bill actually provide some form of insurance to them in the case of a failed fire?
So, our location is about twenty-five kilometers from here.
So, our location is about twenty-five kilometers from here.
The community is a scale from Hosses off to Genehaven, and the verma is behind us. And that is the reason why the whole fire situation, and the verma supports the community.
So, the community we are staying, has been moved from Hosses to Genehaven. And right behind that is the military base or the army, who obviously shoot, and they often cause fires, and we don't get any support from them in the case of a failed fire.
And we have two brand listeners who have received sponsorship, but these brand listeners, who have come here, they are the leaders, they are the leaders, they are the leaders, and they want to go to places, to go to the front, for the brand listeners, as there is a brand in our area. But they have received us in here.
So, we have two small fire extinguishers in our community, and it's actually under the control of the previous committee. So, should a failed fire break out, we would actually have to go to one of their farms to collect the fire extinguishers to go and extinguish a fire. And often it's the case that we cannot even contact these people, we can't get hold of them.
Chair, I would like to share with you about our community of Genehaven. We are a colored community, about twenty-four kilometers from here.
So, we have been located there since 1992, and when it comes to elections, we've always been voting ANC.
And also, as the elections go down, we support the ANC.
So, we have been located there since 1992, and when it comes to elections, we've always been voting ANC.
So, and you won't believe it, that we, we don't have work, the people there don't have jobs, and the councillors haven't been doing anything. The council office is still open, but the new councillors are not, they have never been to the IDP gathering, or the mayor was with us.
We've had a new municipality councils for about eight months, and you won't believe me, that in that time, the mayor never had a meeting with us, we'd never had an ADP meeting called. There's been no contact with us.
And the community, it's almost six hundred people, but there are still eight people who are women there, and three from the municipality, who are doing these jobs.
So, in that community, we have a population of about six hundred people. Only eight of them work for the municipality, for the mine, and three of them work for the municipality.
What's the area's name again?
Genehaven.
Genehaven.
J E, double M, H A V E N, E N. What number three? And there was, from 1992, it was only five houses built.
Is that CPA, yes or no? It's not CPA. It's not part of the CPA, the lead.
In the area is, when the war is over, it's, when the war is over, it's not twice what the right is. But the other three is, is unclar, but it's after.
And the reason for this is, of the five houses that have been built, only two are completed. The other three were not finalized, but they were signed off.
Here is the information, the people, especially the young people, they are not educated. That's why a lot of them don't have jobs, they are basically qualified up to grade nine level. So, we're glad that the municipality must also look at the social labour plan, because why, the people can't work, and also they can't do the secret work. But the municipality, and so do the urban businesses, they will let the people have a grade twelve.
So, we would like to ask the municipality to look at their social education plans as well, because a lot of the time when it comes to offering jobs, they have grade twelve as a requirement, knowing that the people in this community don't have that level of qualification, they only have up to grade nine level education.
And if you propose that, then you'll deal with the bill now. If there are any other issues, you can submit them in writing, then we'll direct them to the relevant authorities, please, for the time that you have taken.
Good morning.
Good afternoon.
Good morning, Arthur Williams from Postmasberg.
Chairperson, my name is Arthur Williams from Postmasberg.
I thank you for your knowledge, that I have a phone skip, um, to comment on it.
Thank you very much for the opportunity to have this platform to raise comments on the bill.
We have created, or established, a fire protection association. And, yeah, for the past days, we have started a group and institutions, eight or nine of them.
And one of the challenges we've been experiencing is that certain groups and organizations have been excluded from this act.
Darum unterstützen uns die Richtungen, dass die Staatsorganisationen und Organisationen bei der Bestreitung von Fällen arbeiten.
Und für diesen Grund sind wir ekstatisch, dass staatliche Unternehmen und Organisationen dazu gehören, Teil der Firefighting Associations zu sein.
Uns vertrauen, dass es besser zusammenarbeiten wird, effektiver wird. Natürlich besser verwahrte wir für unsere Gesellschaft.
Wir glauben, dass dies die Zusammenarbeit und Effektivität verbessert und auch die Erwartungen unserer Menschen verbessert. Wissen Sie, dass sich zirka Organisationen ausgenommen werden?
Nein, nicht in dieser, aber vorherige, alte, so wir unterstützen das Fakt, dass sie junge Menschen hineingehen.
Ja, okay.
Es ist ein sehr positiver Wechsel.
Der Interpräsentation war, dass es zirka Organisationen, die in der Vergangenheit ausgenommen wurden, klar ist, das ist sehr appreciative. Weil wir hören, dass jetzt staatliche Unternehmen wieder hineingehen. Danke. Ich wollte es nicht missbrauchen.
Uns wird auch, ich denke, vor der Gespräche, sie hat es auch genannt, die Vermerk ist für uns ein großer Risiko.
Ich denke, vorherige Gespräche haben dies tatsächlich erwähnt, aber die Militär ist für uns ein großes Risiko.
In Sammer und Transnet in Iscom, da ist viel, was verursacht wurde, die Kurzleitungen in Sparks. So ist es bei früheren Gesprächen, dass es bei der Bestreitung von Fällen arbeitet.
Wir sind sehr glücklich, dass Organisationen wie Iscom und Transnet dazu gehören, Teil der Firefighting Associations zu sein. Weil das Arbeit, die sie tun, oft große Feuerwehren verursachen, durch Sparks und Stromschüsse und Dinge wie das.
Uns sind eine positive Zusammenarbeit, mehr Organisationen, mehr Qualität, mehr effektive Fäusten.
Wir sind froh, gemeinsam mit den Associations und den Municipalitäten effektive Fällen vorzubereiten. Und uns zu verteidigen gegen Fällen.
Vielen Dank, Herr Präsident.
Ich appreciere deine Einblicke, danke.
Guten Morgen.
Na, so.
Guten Morgen.
Du meine.
Guten Morgen.
Guten Morgen. Hier spricht Marie Nyaka.
Guten Morgen, mein Name ist Marie Nyaka.
Wir möchten diese Gelegenheit nehmen, meine Grüße zu Gästen zu sagen. Also, sie ist aus Postmasberg hier. Wir möchten diese Gelegenheit nehmen, meine Grüße zu den Parlamenten und den Vereinen.
Sie ist aus Postmasberg, ich habe viel Gelehrte, die Parlamenten, die angefordert sind, zu begrüßen und zu bedanken.
Ich bin sehr dankbar für das, dass Sie speziell zu uns kam, uns zu zeigen, wie man Feuer behandelt. Also, Sie haben uns taught, wie man Feuer behandelt, aber als Bürger müssen wir uns selbst auch lernen, das zu tun. Der Grund, warum ich sage, dass wir uns lernen müssen, ist, dass wenn Feuer ertrat, wir waren von einem Kolomella trainiert. Aber dann, das nächste, ist, dass wenn Feuer kommt, es gibt keine Weise, zu befeiern. Und dann mussten wir etwas tun, um Feuer zu befeiern.
Warum wir uns selbst lernen, um Fällen zu befeiern, ist, dass, nachdem wir uns die Kolomella-Einrichtung erlernt haben, ist, dass wenn Fällen auf uns stehen, muss man selbst in die Fällen befeiern.
Also, ich bin mit Feuer fertig. Hier ist ein anderer Punkt. Wir sind sehr froh, dich zu sehen. Weil was uns hier attracted, war der Begriff Parlament. Also, wir hofften, dass Sie zu uns gekommen wären. Und dann waren wir sehr froh, zu kommen und zu sprechen zu relevanten Menschen. Also, es gibt so viele Menschen, die hier aufgerufen werden. Weil wir sehr froh sind, dass wir wussten, dass wenn wir uns selbst verraten, die Probleme erzählen, dann würden sie uns beweisen, was zu tun ist. Wir haben so viele Dinge gesprochen, die den Wohlfühlen der Municipalitäten brauchen. Also, wo ich bin. Wir sind zu häufig zur Municipalität gegangen. Das einzige, was wir für uns fordern, ist eine kleine Farm, wo wir unsere Lebensmittel tatsächlich verhalten können. Also, die Municipalität hat uns wirklich zu uns gezeigt, sie hat uns gefilmt, sie haben uns ein paar kleine Briefe gegeben, die sie uns schrieben.
Also, die Municipalität hat eigentlich für uns gejuckt, aber für uns gezeichnet Briefe gegeben.
Jetzt waren dies Briefe, in denen sie sagten, wir würden eine Farm vergeben.
Und das Briefe, was geschah, dass uns eine Farm gegeben wurde.
Es gibt nichts, was schmerzt, wie jemand zu dir sagt, ich werde es dir geben. Und dann sehen Sie keine Resultate. Also, wir waren sehr froh, in Wirklichkeit, Sie selbst, Sie könnten uns etwas sagen, wir wissen nicht, was Sie tun sollen. Also, unser Wunsch war, dass Ihr Kommen hier, war, dass Ihr einen Walkabout in unserer Beechoköpferstadt gewesen wäre. Das wollte Sie tun. Und jetzt haben Sie das nicht getan. Alles, was Sie gemacht haben, ist, dass Sie kamen und sich hier in der Kommunalen Hall setzten. Und dann begonnen, hier zu sitzen, zu schauen und zu hören.
Also, ihr habt nicht getan, ihr habt nicht gekommen, ihr habt nicht in die Municipalität gegangen, ihr habt nicht gekommen, ihr habt nicht gesessen, dass uns, ihr habt nicht gekommen, ihr habt nicht gehört.
Also, vielleicht hätten Sie vielleicht einen Walkabout in unserer Beechoköpfer-Gemeinschaft gehen können und dann zurückkommen. Dann, durch Hören auf Sie, hätten wir wahrscheinlich jetzt erfahren, wo wir unsere Lebensmittel morgen machen sollten.
Wir sind ja, ihr habt uns in der Gemeinschaft gegangen, gegangen sehen, wo wir angefangen haben. Und dann für uns kommen sehen, was angefangen hat, und dass ihr das für uns sehen wollt, um uns weiterzuhören.
Also, jetzt haben wir Dinge wie ein schönes Krankenhaus, das von einem Kolomella hergestellt wurde, aber es hat keine Medikamente. Wir haben keine. Wir haben keine Närte. Also, wir haben keine Närte. Also, es gibt nichts schönes hier in Postmasberg. Wenn Sie vielleicht einen Walkabout gehen konnten, hätten wir Ihnen zeigen können, wo wir unsere Todesfälle verbergen. Also, diese kleinen Stücke von Land, die uns gegeben wurden, für Verderben? Das gleiche, man ist qualifiziert, in der Lage, die Stände zu halten. Also, die Municipalität dreht sich herum und benutzt sie als Stände, die für Menschen vergeben werden.
Nun, ihr habt die einzige Municipalität umgebracht, die nicht verstanden lassen, die Menschen.
Also, sagen Sie mir, Herr Präsident, wenn Sie Ihre Haus leaveen und dann vielleicht sagen, ich werde eine Besuchung des Grabes machen. Und dann finden Sie Menschen, die tatsächlich um den Graben des Todes des Menschen liegen.
Für die Ruhe, ich finde, das ist ja verdammt. Und ich kann, ich begriffe, dass du in der Kasse Menschen um vier bei, ein gegebenes Grab, wo ich.
Mein letzter Kommentar.
Kann ich mit Ihnen reden, bitte? Ich habe viel zu sagen.
Es ist der letzte Punkt, es ist der sehr letzte. Also, das ist, was ich sagen möchte. Lassen wir dieses Regime nehmen. Und nehmen wir den Weiden zurück. Weil während des Weidenregimes gab es keine. Also, lassen wir uns alle zurückgehen. Und zu der DA. Weil jetzt sind wir in der ANC. Aber die ANC nimmt uns nicht. Es gibt keine Vorteile von ANC. Weil jetzt, wenn Sie. Sie sehen, dass sogar die Verletzung kommt von den Dämonen der ANC.
Sie sehen, Südafrika ist ein demokratischer Land, jeder hat Freiwilligkeit. Dies ist Südafrika. Können wir die Rednerinnen und Redner protektieren? Mit öffentlicher Teilnahme, wo die Menschen ihre Meinung expressieren. Und wir können sie nicht limitieren, sie haben ihre Rechte zu sprechen. Und sie müssen sich gegenseitig unterstützen. Ja. Ja, der letzte, ich glaube, ist der letzte. Ja, weil die Menschen, die das geschrieben haben, sind.
Grüße zu einem schönen Parlament. Und dann ist unser Präsident Zanzabane. Ich habe sehr Angst, weil die alte Dame hier, als sie war, aufgegangen war. Aber der Punkt ist, dass sie wirklich was in ihrem Herzen sagen muss. Eine der wichtigsten Dinge, die ich sagen möchte. Also, die Menschen haben viel über Wege gesprochen, wie Feuer ausstoßen und die Unterstützung, die es hätte gegeben. Und auch mit Blick auf unsere Lebensmittel in Zanzabane. Also, ich wollte wirklich ein großes Dankeschön für den Parlament sagen, der hier in unserer Postmasberg-Stadt erschienen hat. Wir sind sehr Angst, aber auch sehr gespannt darauf, die Schönheit, die wir sehen, der Menschen, sogar von der Municipalität. Ich hoffe, Ihr Kader wird eine große Unterschiede hier in Postmasberg bringen. Und dann, eine Sache, die ich meinem Präsidenten sagen möchte, ist, dass sie neu ernannt sind. Also, lassen wir uns sicherstellen, dass wir ihnen eine Chance geben, um zu beweisen, dass sie sich beweisen. So, dass in der späteren Phase, wenn wir einen Angriff auf etwas ausüben, was sie noch nicht gemacht haben, dann wissen sie warum. Jetzt sind sie neu ernannt, wir wollen ihnen eine Chance geben. Also, sie haben eine Veranstaltung gehabt, die wichtig war. Also, sie haben eine wichtige Veranstaltung gehabt. Und lassen wir ihnen eine Chance geben, dass wir sehen, was sie uns zurückgeben.
Sie haben eine, 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 eine Gelegenheit gefunden, um ihre Lernung zu beweisen, um eine Chance zu bekommen, um zu sehen, was von ihnen kommt.
Ich hoffe, Sie haben es gesehen, wenn Sie in Postmasberg fahren, Sie haben einiges gesehen, viele Häuser, viele Schächte. Und natürlich sollte das eine Indikation sein, dass Sie zu uns gekommen sind. Und sicherstellen, dass unsere Geld, das ausgegeben wurde, tatsächlich zurückkehrtkommt. Und es wird verwendet, um all diese Situationen in Ordnung zu bringen.
Ik hoop dat u i now hier in Bosmansberg in reiszo i, die gegrig is, is in stukka is is zien. En dat het een indicatie zal zijn dat jeder ons moet komen helpen, dat helpen die geld wat hier uit die dorp uitgaan weer terug belees zal worden in die dorp.
Eh ma di er nou amu bosman, di eh, di di mining si di mo bosman, di bed di di sen di kilso, mo chetet Tzarona, mo bosman, mo aha bosmansberg iya aru. Ini unke ja ka, ja ka le mikaas, boné au tse na le mikaas, unke ja, li bosman iya aru na, ribadla, ini unke, di chetet Tzaronas ka di achoa. Di ditle mo gurun na, ko bankanya mutwa runa, uné mo unke.
So the mining, the mines that we have here in Bosmansberg eh should have an objective actually of making the city of Bosmansberg a beautiful city just like La Merca. You can see how beautiful that place is.
Ha ja ho kam.
All these other issues, we lay over the sheks and all these other stuff, we'll deal with that, but let's talk to come back to the building.
Oh nou, aluklija kasé, kasé, vèsi, lavala bena mo bosmansberg, diak hola hor siami.
Well, if you have come to Bosmansberg about the worries which you know we have, that is okay.
As i Bosmansberg, hoe kom je toe, en kom je deze wat i biedt ons vita, dat is het mag graag.
So, hanak wat hor siyanako, kieso di lucht, lucht iti di builen kwa tuh abosman, baba di lamu bosman, ik sa diya ha.
So I don't want to waste time because many of the things that have already said by the Bosmansberg residents, we hope this is, and these things are going to be fulfilled.
Ons hou ik veel tijd moest naar vader, ik hoop dat je dit wat je wilt zeggen. Aku, waar moet je te zeggen door die vetson waar? I want to know what you have to say about the bill.
Re amu hela, re di amu hela.
The, the bill we, we do support, we, we support.
Ons wil de stini bij.
Re amu hela, kie hola horre kehe di se, kirka ra wat hor siyanako ma, kie watala hor ba, di tiri, tiri wat tuh di amu hétin, tiri amu hela, ali diya ha.
So who do you want? So my, my biggest desire, as having accepted the bill, is the fact that things that I have said, which is good.
Re alé wa wa holo, thank you so much. Eh, I think there's one thing that is doable.
Ik denk dat je een wat ons moet doen.
I'm gonna direct the acting mayor here.
Ik ga nou free, want i'm in de bergenmeeze, ik, from?
You know, in terms of the law, you are expected to give feedback to communities every three months. Apart from the madly meetings that take place, you know that, that is legislated. And one thing that I observed, since you came into power, you have not been consulting, communicating with these communities. So our committee secretary is going to give you this role call with these people? And we are directing you to hold an imiso to talk to your people?
Het is ons instruksie aan iom imiso daar.
It's done, and municipalities are doing every three months, they are holding imisos with their communities, I see it's not happening here. Because, that gives you an opportunity for the community to give you feedback on what you're doing, whether they are happy or not, and good proposal on how best can this city can be learned.
Jede imiso wat gehoud wordt met die mensen, al de drie mondes, weet geven voor geschrond man i. En ons wil je, je moet met die mensen hou, zodat je kan uitvinden wat is die mensen's kwesties en vormen, zodat ieder kan anspreken.
It's a deal, this one thing that you are going to monitor, whether you are talking to, and the committees, the what committees that are this function. It's not about just forming what committee for Malaysia's compliance. There's a reason why they don't say there must be what committees, they have to meet, the council, naturally, those what committee meetings and then bring you to the municipality. That should form part of the agenda of the municipality. In sila, our public participation processes tend to be on municipality imiso, you're making our life very difficult. Eh, se ufetoha ya nu, hona ko ba nu, ebatubatsani, ngoné ho tsa bo na, eh ya bo na horre ya nu, kon li sinéla Tzarona, ya kariklija kataba Tzarona mo. And as public representative, we cannot ignore these people, that's why we have to listen to them. And I believe you are taking notes because you must then, you must write to us, provide us feedback in writing on what are you doing with all these service deliveries that the people have raised. Because if I'm to say responded now, I don't think for certain issues you've got answers, also you are representatives of other people. And for you, our people, all those issues that you have raised with us will continue to get progress from the municipality until they are resolved. To us, come colleagues, eh, it's a pity today that they was raised about you, when we in the first day, there's no we called you. There was a lot of issues of your safety, your poles, that causes fire whatever. I hope you will be with us tomorrow in Gurman and Kimbalen because you might find, there are not, there are no issues here. But when we in the first, that's the reason why we said we need to call you to be part of this meeting because there was a lot of issues that are raised about you. Similarly, this side you might be doing, that's an indication because I didn't hear any complaint about your side. From the colleague from Salga, you can hear you have done the injections, you have done what you're supposed to do to put structures, but you can see what you have put here is not working. As you think this a matter, you're gonna take it back to your political principal, also would like to get the feedback from yourself, how are you going to resolve the issues here? Pumesa, can you grab the mic next to our today and respond to the issues that has been raised that the department can provide solutions? There were questions and then I think the team that are your line function. Eh, is Pumesa know that as the D B G, forestry management in the department of eh environment, fisheries and fossil forest?
And thank you, Chadperson, and good afternoon.
Dank je voor het erin, kom je maar.
I think I will try and eh club issues maybe into forming ideas that we want to respond to.
Ik denk dat ik kwesties in vier, we vergruppabe ma gosje, zo is het suisse onkam anspreken.
Okay, the, the bill itself encourages our communities to join what we call fire protection associations.
Die wetson waar moet je ons gemeeskap aan, om deel te vormen van braanbestrijden voor je nachts.
And the C P A is a part of those landowners.
Kan di eh, C P A kika rolo ya kan eu.
And furthermore, the bill forces our municipalities to be part of the F P As so that they can do collaboration.
Jede wetson waar voor scherm mensen bedankt om deel te bieden van die voor je nachts.
So as a department, our role is to make sure that all these stakeholders are able to come together and establish this F P As. So our colleagues in our regional office led by Mr Julius Formanyané will ensure that we facilitate that process.
Ons collega me Julius zal die process lai, om zeker de facilitation te proeven.
One of the things we are doing currently is eh, eh developing what we call an F P A support strategy. This strategy is going to assist us in terms of evaluating our F P As in terms of their functionality. And from that evaluation, we can be able to see what kind of support we can provide.
In vanaf daar die evaluatie kan zien wat zo kunnen stieren, gebied moet worden.
One of the things we've identified is that eh, even though the support strategy is not finalized, we need to strengthen our A N S campaigns.
Jeden kwestie wat dus identificeren, is dat dus onderstelling dat die nog niet blad is, in final is, mocht mo dus bewezen moeten, is vaartuft er verwerkt.
And we've also identified that there is training that is required that we would have to attend to. Eh, now that the structures within the municipalities have been finalized, eh we need to strengthen our collaboration with the municipality. Such that this A N S campaigns and this trainings that we want to do and any other work around fire management has a role.
Na de die ser die er geven de meseer is, moet die somen werk, aan die somen in municipality de verbeteren wordt, om zeker te maken dat al die werk wat genoemd wordt, er thuis te heen.
Eh, lastly, Chadperson, eh, with regards to the issue of the peace officers. We provide this training and eh what we would request is that eh through the regional office, the information can be submitted there. Because what we do, we collect the names and then when we have eh, eh a good enough number, we are able to do that training.
En dus te bewezen aan die opleiding wat gebied wordt, eh afverstekt dat je normen in leise door van, oorgerd hiemand aan is terien kan te werken. In leiste moet ook wenn je die mochten, maar toch nog meer mensen is, zuin normo gelijk is daar, zo opleiding verschouw.
So this is the training that we perform to make sure that the, the people that get to be appointed to enforce, they are capacitated.
We appreciate you, D D G, did you omit something?
No, I'm good.
Yeah, you see, leaving your air-conditioned office in Pretoria to come down here to hear what people are feeling is a good thing. Wish you well in your responsibility, we appreciate your commitment. The other issue, D D G, you saw Mem having crying here, you saw her. And this is a beneficiary of the C P A. And incidentally, we passed by eh, my, my remand as we were coming, we were commenting in the past to say the appalling condition, they are just opposite the mining, big mining company, that's doing a lot of mining there. The situation of Mem having is traumatizing, you've seen her cry. I hope by the time we leave here, you'll have convened a counterpart in the department of rural development, dealing with C P A to say his high tide this matters of C P As must be finalized and resolved. Yeah, I think what I did in some way. Can I hand over to honorable person, the colleague I introduced who was outside, is gonna say to you what hours I'm going to move forward from here. Before that, for you to have confidence in our processes, we are giving the municipalities for end days to write to us on all the issues that you're doing about all these things and to tell us when I want to host that community outreach program. I urge you to trust these processes, you are not just here for lip service. It's your parliament, this are public, they are public representative that you have elected to represent you and then will be failing in exercising our responsibility if we don't follow up on these matters.
Dank je voor het.
Thank you, Chadperson.
Namens, namens die commiteer, maar ik graag dankjes even bij jelen deelnamen.
Maar hof is ik een medier, want je dank je voor je participatie.
Die commiteer, jelen insa zorgvolldig angeleiste.
The com, committee listened to all of your opinions.
Die department van postbul, visereien en ogenhieringszaken zal jelen kwesties anspreken.
The department of fisheries, forestry and environmental affairs will address your issues.
Die commiteer zal een verslag optrekken in een, in een parlement debatier.
The committee will draw up a report and they will accept it and they will present it to the parliament.
Daarna wordt die wetson werk naar die nationale rat van profenses verwees, warna die nationale rat van profenses die wetzgevende proces zal beheer.
Afterwards, this will be sent to the N C O P whereby the consultation will take place from the N C O P side.
Iena wordt die wetson werk naar die president verwees als aanbepelen, warna dit wetzal word.
Afterwards, this will, the bill will be sent to the president where it will be given to and he will be adjusted or accepted or signed into law as, as a law. Thank you.
Thank you, honorable person. I think from the bottom of my heart, I want to thank you all. Yeah, that you took time to be with us today. And then for some of you whom I can't speak in. Just accept my, my apology, but I do sympathize with your conditions. Had you helped me, directing the municipality want to do on the service deliveries. Then, we are also pressed for time because we need to do it within the stipulation, you are still going to the other regents in your area tomorrow? And we have seen you are, you are, you are lack of engaging with your public reps, we have seen that. And we agree with you that you cannot have democracy without us listening to your views. Absolut chileka, if you still want to write your opinions on other thing, you can write and send them to eh. And I'm glad that you have expressed your views freely. And we want to thank you for that. And then you must pay food, the, the, the people, there will be ashes coming to pick you one by one so that you get your food as you are going to your various transports. Safari is, is very wise.
Boei dank je alle wat vandaag is ook in woordach was, we swat weer alle ins, al die insa wat die gelevered is voor ons, boei dank je die tijd gemocht is voor ons. Ons gaan more naar die volgende streep, toen ons het bepaard de tijd om die wetson waar anders te spreken, moes hoeveel i boei dank je zeg, dat i hierin gekomen is. Als je blijf blij is in plekken, we gaan een verschön voorbijkomen, wat voor i zo lai, i grieft, ik raam de eet voor het i, dan en i verfiet klemp in aan van or of hij is te gaan, boei dank je.
We thank you all, enjoy your weekend and thanks so much for coming.
We love you.